Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, I'm still croaking like a frog. Six, five, five weeks after getting the flu? Don't get the flu, it's very bad this year. So, I want to call this meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners to order. Today is March 12th, 2024. It is approximately 1:00 PM, running a minute late. We have two folks today, one to give the invocation, one to give the pledge of allegiance. It will be Kevin Ballard, pastor of Cavalry Chapel Inverness, welcome, to give the invocation. And then we have Mark Acker, who's a first sergeant. Years of service was 22-plus years, so he's retired US Army Combat Medic and Paratrooper, which means he's officially a badge you-know-what, which I can't say out loud. But we thank him very, very much for his service. He was in Desert Shield and Storm, Battle of the 73rd Easting with the 2-2 Armored Cavalry Regiment, ordered the Combat Medical Badge, multiple deployments to training centers nationally and in Germany. So, and his current volunteer service is with the Veteran Service Office. So, he obviously knows what it means to serve, and we very, very much appreciate his service to our country. If you are willing and able to stand, we were going to do the invocation first and then lead into the pledge.
Father, first of all, we want to give you thanks for the breath in our lungs.
We thank you for the beauty of this day, and we thank you for this wonderful, amazing county that you've called each one of us to reside in and live in. We do this because your word tells us every good gift comes from the Father above. We look at our county and the people that live here as a gift from you. Lord, I pray a blessing upon each one of the commissioners. We thank you, Lord, for their skill set. We thank you for their desire to serve. We thank you, Lord, for all that they mean to our community. We ask that you bless each one of them, bless them in their health, bless their families, bless the businesses that they own and tend to. And, Lord, I also pray that as each one of the commissioners sits and listens to the different constituents and the different agenda items that come up before them, that they would humbly petition you, Lord, our Father, for wisdom. The reason we ask this is because your son makes this promise to everyone that would ask for wisdom, and wisdom is needed with the different things that they will attend to on the agenda and need to be adjudicated. The promise your son makes is if they will ask, they will receive; if they seek, they shall find; and if they knock, that door shall be opened unto them. Lord, we thank you for these promises. We thank you for the wisdom that you will graciously and generously give to each one of the commissioners as they seek your favor for what is best for this community and the constituents that have placed them in office of service. In their son's name we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sergeant. Madam Clerk, roll call.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 12th day of March 2024. And attendance are Chair Holly Davis, First Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Second Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Ruthie Schleba, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise Diamond-Lynn.
Excellent, thank you. Board looking for approval of, or, excuse me, Mr. Howard?
Yes, just a few items. There's additional information for C2, the proclamation, the 22nd Annual March for Meals Month, a check will be presented to the board. We're also requesting to pull item number E7, the Barge Canal Boat Ramp. We're going to bring that back to the board at a later date. Also, there's some additional information, H2, for the budget development presentation added. Also, there was another item that was requested by Commissioner Kennard to be added in further conversation. That's not going to be added. That's going to be the Inverness TDC funding interlocal agreement. That will not be added to the agenda this time.
Thank you. And I see Commissioner Kennard?
Yes, I had, I had asked for this item to be brought forward, to add it to the, to the agenda today. I'll talk more about it during my portion of our agenda later, but in order to, in an effort to keep the peace, I thought it best that we have a discussion first about it, and then I'll ask for it to be added to our, ask for an agenda item the next meeting for a completed MOU.
Excellent. Looking for a motion for the agenda with the changes as noted?
Madam Chair, a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of C2, pulling E7.
Hang on, you need to turn your mic on, sorry.
Taking care of.
No, it's, they're taking care of, turning it off.
All right, we're going to start over. Motion to approve the agenda with the addition of C2, pulling E7, and addition H2 and deleting L1. Second.
It's an, it's addition, oh, that's right, deleting L1, okay, it's wrong on here. Excellent. A, yes?
That is additional information for those items, not addition, adding the item.
Sorry.
And also, I don't believe we're deleting L because it hadn't been added, correct?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So, it's approval of the agenda with additional information for C2, pull item for E7, and additional information for H2. Is that, your understanding is correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a motion by Commissioner Bays and a second by Commissioner Schleba. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Just a little side note, we have a new microphone system that's going to help us communicate with the public better, and we started it a few months ago, but it's got much better acoustics, so people can hear us better, and, if you want to. And there's some added functionality, so you're going to see us stumble a little bit up here today, perhaps, and it's because we're trying to work the new system on being recognized and things like that. So, apologize for that, but it's a fairly light agenda today, so it's a good day to experiment. All right, board looking for a motion on the consent agenda, and would you like to do it in its entirety?
Motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Bays, was, oh, Schleba? Okay. Any board discussion? Any public comment?
Hopefully, they will turn it, can you turn on the, turn the, turn the person on? Okay.
And pull the mic down, please.
Okay. On the consent agenda.
Name, please, you know.
On the consent agenda, B7. I would like to have some discussion about that because it's going to be impact fees for the school, which is fine, okay, but it looks like $7,846,393 is going to Floral City for supposedly needed repairs, which are now 25% higher than they were in 2020. I don't get to go to board meetings for the school board, okay, but I have been to different meetings, and from what I understand, the population and problem with overcrowding in the schools in Citrus County currently is in Citrus Springs. They're at over 100% capacity, and you're going to be sending over $7 million to Floral City from impact fees. Impact fees are being used properly, but if we're going to be using them, I think there should be more of a discussion as to where those impact fees are going, because it needs to go where the population is. Thank you.
Chair.
Janet, I asked you for your name at the beginning, and I've.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I said, oh, it was before the mic was on. Janet Barick, Citrus Springs.
Anyone else for, open to the public on this item? Seeing none? Any board discussion? Would you like to pull that or just let it run?
Madam Chair? If the school board comes forward with, I'm certain with Chuck Dixon's input on where they need to have funding to expand capacity in their school system, I have 100% faith and trust in the information that he presents to the board and ultimately what they bring forward to us in terms of where those funds, resources need to go, so I'll support it.
Any other comments by the board? Commissioner Schleba?
I don't believe any of our schools are 100%, and I would like to piggyback on what Commissioner Kennard said. This has been vetted through the Citrus County School Board, and they know what their priorities are, and I don't, just saying something's at 100% doesn't make it true. So, I'm going to support this as is.
Thank you. I concur with the comments made by Commissioner Kennard, so is there any further discussion?
I am here to advocate, to advocate.
Yes, thank you. Impact fees for the school board? Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
It's not up here.
So confused. Okay, sorry, new system. All right, so what time is it? When's our next, when's our time certain, 1:30? I think we're just moving on to proclamations. All right. Board, what's your pleasure on item C?
Item Chairman, I'm moved to approve items C1, C2, C3, and C4.
Motion by Commissioner Schleba?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kennard?
Chair.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. I think that only three of you voted on the last item on the machine. It says three.
It didn't give me one either.
I'm going to redo. Yes, everybody hit yes?
I'll vote twice.
Vote your part.
He's from Chicago.
I'm only, so it'll clear. Still only three.
Okay, did everybody vote yes?
Four.
Five.
Five, okay, we're good. All right, we have, we're success. Awesome. Stop. Okay. Nope. Kat, I hope you can clear that. We also have someone that's running things behind the scenes who's also dealing with this for the first time. So, hopefully that'll clear. All right, so back to proclamations. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and if you will join us down here with our sashes.
And it didn't give us an option to vote, just so you know, for C.
Didn't I just say all those in favor, aye? Oh, you're talking about the screen. Got it. Might have been a good idea to not do this when I'm struggling to not cough.
Chair.
We may be abandoning ship soon.
The important thing is that we have it on record with the Clerk's office.
Yes.
So, that's just a digital format, as long as we have it on record.
Yes, for clarity, the Clerk is still running things for public records, all that. This is to help see what's on the screen. There's a lot of folks watching at home, and it's just helpful for folks to be able to track it. And I'm always happy to get feedback if you think it's a waste of time. Anyway, we're experimenting.
Those representing colorectal cancer awareness, if you could please come to the front?
I'll put this on. Water. Thank you.
I'd like Commissioner Kennard to know he is absolutely no fun, because he's not wearing a sash, but he won't do it for water.
Whereas colorectal cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States among men and women combined, colorectal cancer is one of the few cancer that can be prevented with timely screening. But 1 in 3 eligible Americans are not up to date on screening. Colorectal cancer is estimated to be the number-one cancer killer for those ages 20 to 49 by 2030. And whereas black Americans are 20% more likely to be diagnosed with colorectal cancer and about 40% more likely to die from the disease than other groups, colorectal cancer is expected to account for 11% of cancer deaths among Hispanic men and 9% of cancer deaths for Hispanic women. In 2023, there were approximately 153,020 new cases and 52,550 deaths from colorectal cancer. And whereas the national goal established by National Colorectal Cancer Roundtable is to strive to increase timely colorectal cancer screening rates to 80% in every community for all Americans eligible for screening, observing a colorectal cancer awareness month during the month of March would provide a special opportunity to increase awareness and offer education on the importance of early detection and screening of colorectal cancer. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby designate March of 2024 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in Citrus County, Florida, executed this 12th day of March 2024.
Hi, my name is Karen Fisher, and I'm with the Citrus Colorectal Cancer Foundation. I was diagnosed in May of 2020. I tried to donate blood at the hospital where I work. I've been donating blood for years, and they turned me away for a low blood count. So, I went to my doctor, and he confirmed that I was extremely anemic and sent me to get a colonoscopy since I didn't have one at age 50 like I was supposed to. So, they found the mass. The mass was removed by my surgeon, Dr. Patel, and along with my doctors, Dr. Shindy, my gastroenterologist, and Dr. Patel, we formed the Citrus Colorectal Cancer Foundation so that we can help other people through this process. It was quite the whirlwind, so we provide pamphlets that we send to endoscopy centers so that whenever someone wakes up and they have a mass that was found, they can give them our information as someone to reach out to to help guide them through the process. I found out that colon cancer is affecting people in their 20s and 30s and even people as young as teenagers, and it broke my heart, so I said I need to do something. So, that's what we're all about. We're here to help, and we're here to help check your colon, so we try and tell everybody. We're having our first inaugural Colon Fest coming up in less than two weeks now. It's based on the Cooter Fest, which we love so much, but it's Colon Fest. We're going to paint the town brown, so we would, it's Inverness's number-two festival. We would love to have you all join us. Sometimes you have to laugh to keep from crying when it comes to colon cancer, because it really is affecting people. And the American Cancer Society just in January announced that in men under 50, colon cancer is now the number-one cancer killer, and it's expected to be number-one for both men and women by 2030. So, come educate yourself about colon cancer, get screened if you're 45 or older, bug your family members to get screened, because if you catch it early, it is treatable, and you don't want to end up like a semicolon like I did. So, I'm doing well now. It's been three and a half years, and, but I'm here to help others, so I have some pamphlets. If anybody needs information about screening or resources for colon cancer, I've set them over there, so please help yourself, and if anybody needs any help with anything, I'm here to, to help, just reach out to me. And thank you for having me here, I appreciate this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Those representing March for Meals, if you could please come forward? Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals Campaign in March of 2002 to recognize the historic month and the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas in 2024, observance of March for Meals Campaign provides an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas Older American Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered in Citrus County, have served our community admirably for 50 years. And whereas Older Americans Act nutrition programs provide a powerful socialization opportunity for millions of seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that this Citrus County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as its 22nd Annual March for Meals, executed this 12th day of March 2024.
My name is Janice Hale.
My name is Janice Hale. I'm the supervisor of the Meals on Wheels program in the community centers that have senior dining for Citrus County. This group of volunteers are the Friends of the Community Center, and they devote their time fundraising for both the community centers and Meals on Wheels. Today, we're here about Meals on Wheels, March for Meals, and these ladies run the Circle of Friends gift shop at the Central Citrus, at the Citrus County Resource Center. And since they started the gift shop in 2010, they have donated $62,043.29 to Meals on Wheels, feeding seniors right here in Citrus County. We just want to thank you for allowing us to be here and recognizing this important cause. And in the lobby are some flyers. If you want to promote Meals on Wheels and help fundraise for us, we have three different places that are doing dining to donate, so when you come in with a flyer, they'll give part of the price that you pay for your meal to Meals on Wheels. That would be Panda Express, Applebee's, both in Inverness and Crystal River, and Twisty Treat and Home Sasa. So, in the month of March, if you're going to any of those places, take a flyer, and some of your proceeds will come back to Meals on Wheels. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those representing Fix a Leak Week, if you could please come forward? Whereas household leaks account for more than 1 trillion gallons of water wasted across the United States each year, equal to the annual household water use of more than 11 million homes. And whereas finding and fixing leaks is easy as check, twist, replace. Example, checking toilets for silent leaks, twist tightened fixture connections, replace broken fixtures with WaterSense labeled models. And whereas many common household leaks, including worn toilet flappers, leaking showerheads, and dripping faucets, are easily correctable. And whereas fixing leaks can save homeowners an average of more than 10,000 gallons of water per year or amount of water in typical backyard swimming pool. And whereas WaterSense is a voluntary partnership program sponsored by the US Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, to protect the future of our nation's water supply by promoting Water Efficiency and WaterSense labeled products. And whereas EPA's WaterSense program celebrates Fix a Leak Week, the third week of March, as a time to remind Americans to check their household fixtures and irrigation systems for leaks. And whereas Citrus County is partnering with WaterSense to encourage Americans to detect and fix leaks and promote efficient water use to ensure adequate water supplies for future generations. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County does hereby proclaim March 18th to the 20, to the 24th, 2024, as Fix a Leak Week in Citrus County, executed this 12th day of March 2024. Thank you so much for declaring Fix a Leak Week, March 18th through the 24th. We're going to kick it off at the Shrimpapalooza Festival this year, promoting water conservation and teaching people how to check for leaks in their home, and then we'll have a water expo.
Name for the record.
Water Expo in the Sugar Mill Woods community. My name is Deborah Burden. I am the Water Conservation Manager with Citrus County Department of Water Resources. Today, we're joined by some 5th grade Inverness primary students and their teacher. They are also checking for leaks in their homes. They've tested toilets to see if they leak. Usually, we have this every year for 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students, and Mrs. Berbert's class participates every year, so thank you so much for joining us today. We've left some toilet leak detection tablets in the lobby, so as you exit, if you would like to test your toilets, they're attached to a card that offer instructions. Thank you so much. Those representing National Athletic Training Month, if you could please come to the front? Whereas the Athletic Trainers Association of Florida was founded in the year 1983 as an organization committed to the education of its members and the enhancement of the profession of athletic training, creating better health care for the population it serves. Athletic trainers from professional collegiate and high school teams, industries, physicians' offices, rehabilitation clinics, and every branch of the United States military work together to promote and practice the profession of athletic training within Citrus County. And whereas the National Athletic Trainers Association represents and supports more than 45,000 members of athletic training profession, including more than 3,000 athletic trainers in the state of Florida. Athletic trainers are highly skilled health care professionals who specialize in immediate, acute, and emergency care, examination, assessment, and diagnosis, injury prevention, risk management, therapeutic intervention, and rehabilitation of injury and illness. And whereas leading organizations concerned with athletic training and health care have united in a common commitment to raise public awareness of the importance of the profession of athletic training and the role of athletic trainers in the profession of quality health care services, it is the desire of Citrus County, of the state of Florida, to promote improved health care for athletes and all of those who engage in physical activity. And now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as National Athletic Training Month and call upon residents of Citrus County to join us in recognizing athletic trainers for their honorable work in keeping the community healthy, executed this 12th day of March 2024.
Hi, my name is Natalie Perry. I am the athletic trainer at Citrus High School. We are contracted through UF Health to work here in Citrus County. We provide athletic training services to all four middle schools once somebody is hired, Crystal River High School, La Canto High School, and Citrus High School. So, we've been here for a couple of years now and are very happy to serve this community. Thank you.
Okay, we have one minute to go for our time certain, so we'll go ahead and roll into that as the clerk, the clerk, hello clerk, Madam Clerk. Are you ready to go? By the time you get situated, it'll be 1:30. Okay.
I am pleased to bring before you today an audit of the boat ramp fee collection. I'm joined today by my chief audit officer, Robin Barclay, and internal auditor, Sheila This audit was actually requested by Randy Oliver, God rest his soul. He had asked for this a couple of times, and we just couldn't get to it, quite honestly. You know, we just had so many different things on the plate. We were finally able to get it on the, on the calendar. It turned out to be significantly more extensive than we anticipated it to be. However... more extensive than we anticipated it to be. However, I must commend the Internal Audit Department and their great work and persistence in plowing through all of the intricate details of understanding the fee structure and the revenue opportunities for the county. But also, your team in the county, Eric Head, Francine, the, you know, their cooperation and their desire to, you know, see things done right and to make the improvements or the changes that need to be made for the protection of the citizens and the dollars of the citizens is to be commended as well. They were a delight to work with, and we really, really appreciate it. The purpose of the audit, okay, the audit period was January 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. And then, of course, sometimes if there's anything discovered, it may extend outside that scope just a little bit. But the purpose of the audit was to determine whether premium parking service complied with the terms of the contract, to determine whether there were adequate internal controls in place to ensure that all the boat ramp revenues were received and accurately recorded, and then to determine whether there were any other opportunities for improvement. We did, you know, there were some key opportunities for improvement that were identified and also shared with the leadership in that division. And, you know, you already see them moving in the direction to try to strengthen those, you know, where there is potentially a weakness. So we greatly, again, appreciate that cooperation. I will let Robin, Robin's going to just go over a few of those findings and observations, and then, of course, we will be happy to answer any questions that you may have as well.
Good afternoon, and beautiful day it is today. Just, there was a lot, there was a lot going on with the review, and there's a lot of information in the report. But the three takeaways, I think, that are most important are the opportunities that will, you know, strengthen their controls, strengthen their oversight, and hopefully enhance or improve the collection of the revenue. So there were opportunities, like I said, for improving the tracking, monitoring, and enforcement of the contract. This was their very first time entering into this type of contract, so you don't know what you don't know when you go into it. So when we looked at the contract, as Madam Clerk said, we were following Randy's request to examine, you know, what do we have in place, and is it working? And if it's not working, how do we get it to work? So that was, that was our intent going into this audit. There was opportunities within the contract to strengthen either the adherence to it or examine what's lacking in the, in the original contract. So the recommendations we made were based on, on those, on that premise. And then the last one was opportunity to increase or improve the oversight of the reconciliation and the reconciliation of the revenue as well as the expenses. Because, again, this was new. They really weren't sure, you know, how to put all the pieces together. But at, at the end of this, they've got it. They understand where they need to step up and where they need to enforce. So, any questions?
There you go.
Me first?
Yep.
I was thinking we'd get to see the report. Did we not get to see this?
You were hand-delivered the report last week to your office.
Okay. And we're not showing it, I guess. Well, I'll review it, and I guess if I have an issue, I'll have to contact you later. But no, I have not seen the report. Did not know it was available.
That is startling.
Well, I guess then I would need to be notified that it's there and outside my door. Thank you.
I apologize. We can make it a practice to loop back around and ensure that you are notified that you have something here that needs to be reviewed. And I'm so sorry about that. We can't send it through electronic because it is a trap.
Can you speak into the mic since we're now talking about public records?
Yeah, it is, it's, we can't send it via email because it is a public, it's not a public record until it's presented to you. But we, you should be notified. When something is left for you, you should have been notified that it was here. So we'll make it a practice in our office to just loop back around to you and ensure that you are aware because, I'm so sorry about that. Everyone else got it? Okay.
Yeah, they handed it to me during my briefing. I understand you canceled your briefing. However, if it was in your agenda folder, typically the assistant, which we do have a new assistant, so maybe it was overlooked. But if you have a pile on your desk from the agenda folder in the hallway, just make sure you look through it because it might be in there.
Did you get it today?
No, I got it yesterday morning. I had plenty of time.
Yesterday morning was?
It was my briefing, yes.
Oh, boy, you should have had it last week.
I, I got mine Friday. They were all outside the door when I went to the office.
We, I'm so sorry about that. We will, we'll do better. We'll do better at communication, and I am so sorry about that. So once you have the opportunity to review it, if you want to loop, you know, circle back with any questions, Commissioner Finnegan, we're happy to sit down with you and answer those. My apologies.
And Mr. Howard, so in the future, if we have anything, I want whoever you could talk to, being your staff, to a phone call, or maybe where we could pick it up.
We'll put that in our standard operating procedures, so we'll ensure that doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kennard?
Thank you. Angela, that, the money that's collected from the, the boat ramp fees, and we've, we've talked about this in the past from DIAS, that the projects that this money will be used for are, for the most part, multimillion dollar projects, big stuff, whether it's land acquisition, expansion of restroom facilities, improvements at the ramps, things like that. These dollars sit in an account for, could be a couple of years, could be three or four years, until it accumulates to a sizable enough number that we can proceed with one of the projects. In fact, I think the first one up is going to be a significant project in cooperation with the city of Crystal River at the Fort Island Trail ramp. My question is, that money, as it accumulates, is that sitting in an account that is bearing interest? Is that, is that part of an account that, that y'all are managing for investment purposes? That's, when it gets, you know, when it gets to the size that it is now, like 460, 63,000, something like that, that would generate a significant amount of interest each year until we're ready to spend on one of these projects. So, long-winded question, is this money generating interest for us?
I can confirm with finance, but any, any funds that are in the bank, there is an interest, interest is earned, and then it's distributed per rata based on the average daily cash balance in that particular line item. And I'm certain that this particular account would be assigned interest according to that. But may I get back with you?
Yeah.
Just to confirm that. And I can also provide you the numbers.
Okay.
You know, the historic audit trail of that as well.
Yeah, that would be, that would be interesting. I see, I see on our website, we've got up to date there what the revenues and expenses are. But I'm just wondering, nearly half a million dollars now, how much interest is that generating? Because it probably will be another, my guess would be another year, two years before that Fort Island Trail project goes into a construction phase.
I'll provide that to all Commissioners, to everyone.
Commissioner Schleba?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you for this audit. I know that it's a little late, but I know you've been busy. Unfortunately, if we had had it done earlier, you would have caught these errors. But stop being so busy.
Well, part of the delay was giving them an opportunity to get it off the ground, so...
Yeah. Well, I thought this was an excellent audit. I really appreciated it. Couple things which really might not be for you, but Mr. Howard, when the contract is up, I would like to see, some of the findings were obviously about the vendors' collections. And I'd like to see if the county can get back some of the, make an effort, let's say, to recover the undisclosed fees charged to the county by this vendor. Because if they're charging all these extra fees that we didn't know about, that wasn't in the contract, then perhaps we shouldn't renew the contract. And that's a very, that's a concern for me. And some, the observations, I really appreciate it. I'm sure the staff is going to go over this with a fine-tooth comb, so thank you very much for that. Like I said, it was excellent audit, and I appreciate, appreciated reading it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other comments by the board? The, what the, the plan that the staff laid out to me, I thought was a good one, that it was, it is a new thing for this vendor. They've never done launches versus parking before. And so, it's been a little trial and error trying to figure out how to make the, the technology work and so forth. They have been fairly responsive, but they definitely have a lot of room for improvement. And so what the staff said was that we're going to make a lot of changes to the contract. It's three years with a three-year renewal. They will not suggest that we renew for three years. They want to give them a small window of opportunity with a small renewal to fix everything if they agree to the contract changes and what needs to happen, which I think is a good understanding but hard line to take by staff. So, and that all comes back to your excellent audit. So thank you, Clerk, and your, and your team. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sheila just confirmed it is in an interest-bearing account. So we'll get you an audit trail of that. I'll get that out to all of you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna, we have time for one person if they want to speak it open to the public. Otherwise, I can try to do a comedy routine for the next two minutes, because we are going to break at 1:45 for the budget development presentation. Please state your name for the record unless you have a letter on file. You will get three minutes. If you have a letter on file, please let us know who the letter is with, and you will get five minutes. Thank you.
My name is Wendell Oakes. I'm from Beverly Hills. I just have some quick questions. The homeless policy for the county, do we have a homeless policy that is being followed to relocate homeless veterans and drug abusers, that kind of a thing?
I'm sorry, we don't answer. I'm sorry, we answer questions after all of open to the public is done.
Okay. My second question is low and middle income housing plans. I saw, I saw advertising for house rental, $2,500. I don't think people can afford that. At least, at least the low-income and middle-income people in our community, they're the people that are fixing stuff for us, or, you know, doing hard work, outside work. And those people are having trouble finding affordable housing. And I don't see any projects going up in a county that, you know, like apartment, low-income apartment buildings and low-income housing, period. Maybe one and two-bedroom apartments, condominiums, that kind of a thing. My third problem is with CSWR. They, they provide my water and my sewer in my community. I am right behind the facility, and I have no problem with the water, but I have a problem with the smell coming from that facility. Since they took it over from Rolling Oaks, it's, the smell is worse, especially when we get wind coming from the west. And my neighbors are complaining about it. So that's one issue. Then the company itself put up a fence around their entire property, and that fence blocked off the access from Roosevelt through that wooded area over to Beverly Lake, which many of people like myself, we walk our dogs, and it's a nice exercise path going over to Beverly Lake. So that's been blocked off, and the only way I can get to Beverly Lake now is to take Forest Rich with my dog. So I'm not going to do that. I'll drive over to the park and walk the dog. But I, so those are three issues that I'd like some questions on. I do have one announcement to make. I lost a son to drug abuse a year ago, December. I'm starting a Narinon of Citrus County family group that's going to meet every Thursday from 7:00 to 8:00 at the Narsetis Christian Church every Thursday. And I think drug abuse is a big problem in our community. Nobody's talking about it, but I know there's people hurting out there. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
And can someone make sure that we get the lights working up there and that the countdown is working? For open, we are, I'm sorry, we're closing open to the public to go to our 1:45, and then we'll come right back to it. It's the time certance, sorry. We're coming back to it. The, the first open to the public will go right after our time certain. If you are doing open to the public, you need to fill out a green card for the clerk either before or after you speak. So you can work on that if you like. Veronica, you going to make sure that that gets fixed? Thank you. Okay. Also, my cough was so much better until yesterday when they started all the heavy controlled burns in the forest. I'm pretty sure that this is what happened. This is why this happened. So I apologize for those struggling not to cough. You know, we feel that way coming to these meetings sometimes, too. That was, that was, it's, it's fine. It's absolutely fine. These meetings can get tense, so I try to levy them with some humor. Erin, you can go ahead and start since you're not at the podium. She'll get it.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Erin Doran, Management and Budget Director. Today, we have the Budget Preparation Guidelines presentation. Every year, we come to you for guidance, not only for our county departments, but also for the constitutional officers. We have a few slides with some information. It actually changed a little bit from Friday to today, so there are some updates. We understand that this is difficult. We don't have a lot of solid information at this point, but we look forward to your guidance.
Erin, is the, is the one that we were handed at briefings yesterday updated then? Is it the same one that we're seeing now?
It's the same one, but we have updates on a few of the budget impact items.
Okay.
So some of them were approved in committee, and some of them died in committee.
Oh, yes, yes, of course. Thank you.
Just legislative updates.
So we're going to go over our, the budget recap, where we are now, potential budget impacts, budget development guidelines, and then important dates, budget recap. This is where we are for fiscal year '24. I know we've presented this before, but this just kind of shows you with an average assessed value of $1,6973, what the county brings in as opposed to the school board other, which that includes mosquito control and the Southwest Florida Water Management District. And then if they are a citizen of Inverness or Crystal River, they will pay some additional taxes.
Erin, could you read those, since those figures are so small? Can you read those off?
I sure can. So for home of that value, the county would have collected $1,070.49. The school board would have collected $842.01. Mosquito Control and Swift Mud would have collected $71.94. The city of Inverness would have collected $930.21, and the city of Crystal And the city of Crystal River, $789.96.
Thank you.
Of course. The next slide talks about Save Our Homes. For this year, the Save Our Home cap was 3%. Looking at fiscal year 2025, it is going to be the 3% cap. Let's just have some information about Save Our Homes. It was established in 1995. And so if your property is homesteaded, there is a maximum of 3% yearly that the state caps that. For 2023, we looked back at residential parcels. Almost 66% of our residential parcels in Citrus County are homesteaded, meaning that they are subject to that 3% cap. We then have some information about taxable value is approximately 74% of assessed value. If you look at the property appraiser's website, you will see some different value amounts on there. This next slide, we've looked at before, but this is our taxable value history from 2008 through this year. And this is just showing you that just this year in '24, we have reached the same taxable value or quite, you know, just quite surpassed that from 2008. This goes over our current millage. So for general fund this year, it was 6.9951 mils. Of that, 0.2 mils was part of the EMS subsidy that is provided. 0.05 mils was for mental health or the funding that was provided for Livestream. Transportation was 0.9860 mils. Of that, 0.4 mils was designated for road resurfacing. Fire rescue is at 0.5780 mils. Their millage cannot exceed 1 mil. Library services is at 0.3147 mils. Their millage cannot exceed 0.3333. And the Health Department is at 0.0564 mils. Our total millage this year was 8.9302. And we had been asked about our library reserves. Currently, there's $152,247 in library reserves. This is our dollar slide that's broken up between discretionary funding and non-discretionary funding. This looks at, obviously, the funding for constitutional officers as well as state mandates, debt service, transfers to fund other expenses. Under discretionary, you can see there's payroll, operating, and reserves. Excluding reserves, payroll makes up 44% of your discretionary spending. This is an overview of the state mandates. So there are several categories. General government, which includes things like the CRA's audits, inmate medical. Then we have growth management, human services, support services, and then public safety, which includes the detention facility, SOROs, mental health, and the subsidy for EMS. Next are the potential budget impacts. These would be the slides that were updated between what was sent out on Friday and then the information that we updated it with yesterday. The first one being the additional homestead exemption. So that bill, 7017, actually says it's going to increase the homestead exemption yearly based on inflation. On 3/6, it said that this would be placed on the ballot and if approved, would take effect on January 1st, 2025. The second, voting requirement for millage increase. That bill actually died, so it will not be going forward. Number three is the health insurance premium. And speaking with Human Resources, they believe that increase will be between 13 and 15%. They have yet to review the study for last year. So this is just an estimate that they're getting from our provider. Florida retirement system, this changed a few times over the past few months. It did pass in some form, but with very minimal rate increases. So we don't believe it will have a large effect on the budget this year. The sovereign immunity cap legislation, we also found out that that has died.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Erin, could you please tell us which ones died? The two and five, are those the only two that, that didn't pass?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course. The next slide, number six, talks about virtual machine licensing. This is information we received from systems management. This year, the cost to the county was approximately $45,000. They're stating that next year, that cost will increase to $450,000. And obviously, we will have to pay that. Number seven, judicial services renovations. We were unsure when this would take place, so we wanted to bring this forward. This would be for the expansion and renovation for judicial services once the Board of County Commissioners and the county attorney's offices vacate that space. We put a placeholder in the CIP for a million dollars in case that were to happen next year. Obviously, we don't know. So if there's any guidance you would like to provide either now or during the CIP presentation, we can adjust that. The clerk's office, number eight, Article V funding.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yes.
The remodeling for judicial, there's a million-dollar placeholder there?
It would be approved for fiscal year '25. We just put it in, so we didn't miss it or forget it.
Okay, and that's for, that's for remodeling?
The courthouse on the second floor.
The second floor. A million dollars seems awfully steep.
So in discussions, I know Facilities has been speaking with the judges, and that was a number that came up. I can't say if that is the final number. But like I said, if, if there's a different number, if there's a budget we would like to stick in, we can obviously adjust that CIP for that figure.
Okay, yeah, that's, I would like to see us take a better look, have a little bit more of an accurate placeholder. Surely, a million dollars to renovate or remodel one floor up there is a bit of an overshoot.
Commissioner Finnegan.
I would agree with Commissioner Cannard, but I have two other things about that. Weren't we going to help the judges and do the remodeling under the ARPA funds?
So when we brought the ARPA funds, we would need that floor to be cleared out. And we would need to be able to encumber whatever that renovation would be by December 31st. So in discussions with Facilities, it was determined that there would not be time to move those offices out and then be able to design and encumber the funds for the remodel on the second floor.
Oh, it doesn't have to be remodeled. It just has to be encumbered. We couldn't, by December 31st, we wouldn't know the price. Seems like we should know.
You have to have contracts, don't you, in place?
Well, they, right, they would need to go out. They would need to know what services, what they want done. And then we would have to encumber that. So from our previous meeting with Facilities, it was determined that that would not be done in time. Now, there is $2.9 million in ARPA funding that you all have left aside for actually the moving of the offices. If it could be done, again, the $2.9 million is there.
I'd like to see that's what we shoot for. And since I have the floor, I was waiting till you were done with the slide. But the virtual machine licensing? Are we not asking any questions about that? How do we go from $45,000 to $450,000 and no one's raising an eyebrow? I feel like my first response would be no. Certainly, there's another company, another contract. I'm not exactly sure what, what this is, but that doesn't even seem reasonable or possible.
See, if Todd could come forward, that's possible. I said the same thing.
For the record, Commissioner Finnegan, I had the same eyebrow raising. I just didn't say anything yet.
It's insane.
Going up tenfold is crazy.
Good afternoon. Todd Dunn, Chief Information Officer. So what's happened is, is that the $45,000 a year is what we were paying for a lease for both hardware and software. The company that we were doing the virtualization software with was sold by its parent company and went to a new company that's completely changed their licensing model. And so we're looking for an alternative to that software. And so the, the idea of $45,000, $450,000 was actually to look at options. This is the number that was mentioned in, in most of the organizations that I'm a member of, for county governments. If that was an equivalent to what we're using now, would be an outright purchase of new hardware and software to get us up to a new system. So if we went with leasing that year, that number in next year's budget would be lower. And then this is a number that is reasonable from being seen out there. I don't like the size of it, but it was something that we should have, we put in, we should put in the budget just to be aware of. But we're going to certainly look for the best value we can get out of this.
So Todd, why, why did we go ahead and shoot for buying all of this if we had historically been leasing? Why don't we have new numbers for, here's the companies, this is the average cost of leasing with another company?
Right. Well, this came up so suddenly. We just found out about this at the very beginning of February. As soon as I got back from a conference, got right with Erin and said, you know, this is an emergency thing that we need to get on the budget so you're aware that there will be a budget impact. And so we'll look at options. Sometimes, though, leases don't always have favorable terms. And so I wanted to make sure that we're aware of a full buyout versus a lease.
Okay, thank you.
I had one. Do you check your list?
Yeah, it says Commissioner Bayes.
Todd.
The machine doesn't lie.
Yes, ma'am.
Having been in the business where you need a lot of technology, it's been my observation that technology changes at such a rapid pace and that oftentimes leasing this type of software is much more advantageous than a purchase because then you have to have the personnel and the internal staff that can keep up with those updates. So I, I guess before we go down this, I would like, as Commissioner Finnegan said, bring back some options. And let's look, let's see, I, I don't want to have the same, uh, what's the right, I don't want, I want to say this nicely. I don't, I don't want to have the same problems that we did with the permitting licensing software. I want to make sure that we look at all options and know what we've got and, and what, and what's being generally used
Right.
in other governments.
We've done, we're talking with peers in other counties to see what they're using. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with one vendor to begin exploring this process. And we're going to try and get this covered in the budget. But no, we're just not walking in there and just picking one and going. We're looking at options here.
Commissioner Schleber.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. In my briefing that I had, I brought this up. And I, I asked the question, how many companies are doing this? I mean, the company we were using got sold to another company. How many companies out there? Are there thousands of companies that we could, you know, try to get a good bid system out there? Or is it just a handful of companies?
Just a handful, really.
Okay.
That have, that there'd be worth looking at.
Okay.
There's a lot of them that are trying, but you'd want to have somebody with a track record.
Because what I found, it looked like kind of a monopoly. So that's not going to be good for us if there's a monopoly in this area. But I do want to stress what Commissioner Bayes said, that to have really strong communication with this board so that we don't end up in the same mess that we were with permitting. So I would ask Mr. Howard to please, please, don't assume something and just to please update us as a board.
What we're going to do, really thorough due diligence on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. If there's nothing further, I don't see anybody. Okay. Ms. Doran?
Number eight, the clerk's office, Article V funding. The clerk's office has advised the county that they are entitled to Article V funding. It would be between $80,000 to $100,000. We currently provide this funding for the state attorney, the public defender, the circuit court, and guardian en lightum. It is still being reviewed to see if that is the case. But we wanted to let you know that even though some of these funds are collected, the general fund had to subsidize Article V technology funds last year to the tune of $481,000. So it could potentially be another $100,000 for that. Number nine was the repeal of the local business tax. That also died on March 8th. And then the last one, number 10, unauthorized public camping. It looks like this has passed and by the House and Senate. And it would require property to be identified for public sleeping along with the availability of restrooms and running water. The property would only be able to be used for this purpose for one year, after which another property, it would have to be moved to another location. I do not know the ins and outs of this legislation. But just so that it is on your radar if it does actually get signed. The next slides are about budget development guidelines. We're going to go over, obviously, the millage rates, any potential millage adjustments, costs of living increased, and then a health insurance subsidy. So this slide provides potential scenarios for millage and revenues based on some of the commissioner's requests. So we have rollback with 3% growth, rollback with 3% growth, and 3% inflation. We obviously just picked these numbers. And then current millage, if it were to be left and there was a 3% taxable value growth. So the first consensus we would need is, are we going to start at rollback? Or are we going to start with the current millage rate?
Commissioner Bayes.
I find it impossible to say where we're going to start from because in order to make good business decisions, we can't just say we're going to start from someplace until we really have a conversation with all the constitutional officers. And we have a very fluid look at what our needs are beyond what you've put out here today. There's lots of legislation that's been going through Tallahassee that has impacts on local governments. And I think, you know, one, I would like to have a legislative brief packet from our lobbyist that kind of identifies what some of, what legislation has passed and what it looks like and what, what implications it has to our finances. It's much like this homeless legislation being passed. It comes with no funding, but we're required to fund it. And I don't know how you And I don't know how you move something of that magnitude every three hundred and sixty-five days. So my suggestion is, I think that we should have a workshop in room one sixty-six. We should invite all of our partners, our constitutional officers that were required to, um, fund their budgets and have a dialogue. And we need to talk about this in increments of looking out, like, everybody should come to the table with five-year projections of, it's not to say it's written in stone, but we need to know what we anticipate our revenues to be. And we need to know anticipating our expenditures and what our, um, needs are going to be over that five years. I mean, we've talked about roads. We know there's legislative priorities that we're going to have to fund. I, I see things out there with, um, water, stormwater. There's a magnitude of, of things that are coming our way that we're going to have to look at. And I can tell you, even though you, um, put the chart in here that shows we just caught up in ad valorem from two thousand and eight to today. We haven't even caught up in our staffing levels from two thousand and eight on the Board of County Commissioners side. We are woefully understaffed for the things that we are required to provide to our citizens. So we, I mean, there's a just, this is a bigger conversation than saying where we want to start. We can say where we want to start, but we have to demonstrate where we're going.
Well said, Commissioner Bayes. Um, Commissioner Cannard?
Yeah. My guidance would be, uh, the second option, start at rollback with three percent growth. And, uh, I'm sorry, the third option, apparently I need glasses too. With three percent, uh, three percent growth, and I know those numbers are just plugged in there, but, uh, plus inflation. I understand what Commissioner Bayes is saying, but we also, uh, as the board who's going to be making these decisions, we have to let it be known before these, uh, before constitutionals are developing their budgets, that there's a limited-sized pie. And these are all the things that need to be funded out of it. I hope that, um, that we can get to a point where we're actually reducing our millage rate this year. That I would like to see as we go through the budget process.
Commissioner Schleball?
Couple problems. Um, I've said it from the beginning. We have been trying to catch up. Uh, we were in a negative point on, it showed it on the graph for many, many, many years. And, uh, this board had to do the hard thing last year to make sure that we could pay our bills. But I've said it over and over. I think the millage shouldn't be touched. It's, it's a ship in the ocean and it ebbs and flows with the economy. That is the proper way to do business. That being said, with Commissioner Cannard's, um, recommendation, it's rollback and that sounds great. And he, I might very well go with what he's suggesting. But it is, to me, it's, it's more money than if you just left the millage as it is. So the third part of that is what Commissioner Bayes said. We don't know what our insurance or self-insurance rate is going to be. We don't have a real knowledge of what the IT, um, licensing is. We don't know what the sheriff is going to come up with. We asked last year for everybody to stay at three percent. Pretty much all the constitutionals did, except for the sheriff. We gave him what he needed and, um, I'm peering through the grapevine, he's not even, he's not happy with that. So I think we need to get people in the room. We need to have some hard conversations and really look at, is it best to leave the millage as is? And like I said, just let it do what it does and never touch it? Or do the rollback plus three percent, plus three percent? I, I would really like to have a conversation, have the citizens involved in that conversation. So, um, good luck getting consensus today. Because I think you get five different opinions. But, um, I'm going to go with, uh, the most logical that is presented today. Thank you.
Point of clarification, Ms. Dohrn? The three percent, the third option rollback with three percent taxable value growth and three percent inflation, are those plugged-in numbers that you would change for the actual taxable value growth? Or is it just flat-out three percent?
So these are scenarios. We obviously don't know, uh, what the taxable value growth is going to be. Um, in previous years, we would say that because the save our home cap is capped at three percent, we would normally do three percent when we did rollback, three percent growth, and then some number for inflation. When we looked at inflation last week, it was, or the week before, the past twelve months for all CPI was like three point nine four. So we put in three percent. In previous years, we even said that inflation was five percent growth of three percent. And so even though it totaled eight, we didn't do eight percent on the millage. We told everyone to stay within six and a half percent for their budget. And actual millage only ended up going five percent up. So, um, these are just scenarios. It's just to show you the different ways that it can be done and that we can look at it. And this is really, at this point, um, we've started budget. We're going into phase two. So our departments, um, are looking at their operating budgets. And obviously, everyone is feeling an increase in costs everywhere. So instead of them turning in a budget that has everything, um, that might be in there, um, and us bringing that to you, and like you said, you may end up wanting a lower budget than that, possibly trying to reduce the millage rate. That would then mean we'd have to go back and retouch every budget, um, and try to find those areas where we would need to cut to get you back there. Obviously not the constitutionals, they're doing their own budget. But for our departments, um, they're going to start looking at that. So if we know that no matter what, the most we're going to get the board's approval for is rollback plus three percent growth, plus three percent inflation, then that's what we're going to have our departments stay within those parameters.
Right. So, um, I agree with, um, what Commissioner Schleball said about, from a policy standpoint, I like leaving millage alone. Just let it roll. And over more like what Commissioner Bayes said, over looking at it over five to 10-year increments, then if you could see that your trend, you need to, you may need to adjust based on a trend line that's multi-year. But it shouldn't be jerking up and down. Because what people like more than anything is consistency. That's what businesses want too. That being said, our millage is too high. As far as I'm concerned, it needs to come way down because we need to look at alternate funding mechanisms, which all of us have already discussed. Takes time to do those, unfortunately. And it's more direct fee-for-service kind of, um, funding mechanism. So it's, there's no, no big mystery about it. If your residential road gets paved in front of you, you'll be assessed, but it's not going to be on your ad valorem. So, um, right now, it's, it's kind of a mystery. You're paying this ad valorem tax for road resurfacing, but we may not get to you for a while because we're so desperately behind. So I'm talking a little bit in a circle here, but I believe I said yesterday, um, or you said yesterday, that it is possible that a rollback plus plus could end up being more expensive than, or, or net a much larger amount of taxes than doing, just leaving the millage alone. Is that correct?
Depending on what the numbers are for the plus plus and what the taxable value comes in at, yes.
Yeah. So that's, so, so don't get all excited that we're talking about, two of us are talking about leaving the, um, the millage rate the same because it might actually be less taxes than doing something else. And also to Commissioner Bayes' point, we are very understaffed. We're forty-three positions down from two thousand and seven, yeah. And, um, we have twenty thousand more population than two thousand and seven. So, um, we have, well, that's the number they gave me yesterday. I didn't confirm it, but anyway. Mr. Howard has brought a whole new energy to the staff. One of my favorite sayings that he used a lot when he first came here was, I don't want to hear no from staff. I want to hear yes if. So bring, bring the, bring the issues and the solutions to try to be better customer service providers to the county. And he has really tightened up that ship. Oh, there's some notable absences of staffers that didn't, um, understand that way of thinking. He's got some new blood that are doing things. So we are going to be looking, I believe, much further out and much more running this from a planning perspective. So you guys aren't surprised year over year on, on what's happening. It's going to make good progress. I'm getting some smiles and nods from the staff. I think y'all are looking at me when you say that, either that or your, anyway. And I believe Commissioner Cannard is next. You wanted to speak?
Yes. Well, thank you for saying, don't get too excited about an increased amount of tax dollars coming in because I definitely will not support that. Uh, I see the three and three as placeholders. Uh, I do think that we need to take a look at, as Commissioner Finnegan suggested last year, and ultimately, we did not get there, uh, at, um, our reserves. Are the reserves higher than what they need to be? The reserves number should be set at a number of days that the government can, can continue to operate, uh, rather than just a straight percentage of the budget. So I think there's, I think there's some, uh, there's some room there to help on reducing our millage rate, ultimately, uh, as we move forward through this process.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Thank you. It's nice to get some support on that already. Because if you look at what Erin showed us out of our general fund, roughly a third of the money is going to reserves. Do you know, Erin, if something terrible happened tomorrow, what's the whole amount that we have beyond the, I think it's eighteen million that was in the budget for this year?
I would have to go look. Some departments, like the enterprise funds, have their own reserves. So they would use, uh, that funding. So I would, I would have to go look and see how much we could access. There are some little pots of money, like in contingency, um, in places like that, but not, say, another large chunk of the money.
So I do believe in being fully prepared. In the state of emergency, this county should be able to dig ourselves out and then wait for the funding to come back, whether it's FEMA or, or some other federal or state help. But in saying that, we need to decide, and I guess this would be, um, for you, Mr. Howard too, what will it take? What makes us comfortable as a county? And then at that point, stop stockpiling the money because the taxpayers are paying for that and not getting the other services or they're paying more taxes than they'd like to pay. I had another thought and I just lost it. I thought, oh, historically, so if you look over 10 years, I mean, a lot of those years, we were saving at twelve percent. And maybe that wasn't enough. Now we're at our, the highest that we're allowed to save according to our own regulations at the seventeen percent. And that's fine if we need it. But remember, it, being percentage-based, it's way more money. So when we were saving at sixteen percent, the budget before, it was over sixteen million dollars. Now we're at seventeen percent and it's over eighteen million dollars. So as we grow some more, if we're staying at the same percent, it's a much more increased. I don't know what that will look like the next budget, maybe twenty-plus million dollars of taxpayers' money just being saved, which is fine up until the point we're good. Uh, we should have a healthy reserves, but I think that could be a benefit to our taxpayers to ease up some of that burden if we really take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. I would say, um, if knock wood, knock wood, um, we have never had a bad hurricane here. If we get a cat five, we have a lot more structures and a lot more people that are, we're going to have to, um, help recover. So I'm, I would be worried about taking that line of math thought. I've always said that I'm open to discussions on what's reasonable though. And maybe we do trim a little bit on that. But, um, to say that the, the number is just a number and we can just live with sixteen million or fifteen million or whatever, I think that that would be a, a fallacy to go that direction because we do have more people and more buildings to support.
Well, to that point, I'm not saying it's just that number is enough, but we've been saving for years. So I don't know what the number is. When I ran a nonprofit, I knew to have three to six months of reserves. I mean, that's standard. By the time I walked out the door, I had twelve months of reserves. That was very healthy. Um, I didn't feel like we needed to, to keep stockpiling. We could put some into services or other things that we needed. So I'm sure there is a number. I don't know if we're at the number. Maybe we still need to collect at a higher percent. Maybe it doesn't have to be seventeen, maybe it's fifteen percent. But I'm just asking us, as I did last year, to take a very hard look at that number because that may be a benefit. And I think the point I made last year is, um, people are really hurting right now. Every time they go to pay for anything, gas, groceries, medicines, taxes, insurance. So if we can just ease that burden while we're going through this time in our economy and help them get out of this, um, I think that we just need to, once again, take a really hard look at this.
I think last year when I looked at this, I, I like to look at days. And I think you were under two months last year when I looked at this and reviewed it. I'm not sure where we're at right now, but obviously we can look at that. But, um, obviously I like more than less. And I will tell, I know last year when I looked at it from memory, you were less than two months. That was my understanding. Um, but we'll look at that and we, I think we do look at that and review it, but it's important. We actually had a little taste of that during the, um, hurricane, um, last year, which is millions of dollars when you get into the debris business and it takes you a long time to pick that up. And if you got a really good hit, you're probably talking seven to 10 to 12 million dollars of impacts quickly. And that debris's got to get picked up. So those are all things we have to, you know, look at and make sure that we're budgeting properly. But we'll definitely look at it and analyze it and bring back recommendations.
Would there then be a consensus from the board that no one would like to see a millage rate greater than it is right now?
That's correct from me.
Correct.
I don't want to see the millage raised.
So there's your upper limit.
Um, because obviously, like I said, these are scenarios. So if it's just, we know we want to be at the same millage or less, we can start there. Another question we had was last year, we had discussed, um, increasing road or transportation, millage, two tenths of a mil every year. Would the board have a consensus instead of maybe adding the two tenths, us looking for, say, another two million dollars? Possibly without having to raise or increase the millage? Is that a priority?
My, um, I see Commissioner Cannard wants to speak and so does Commissioner Schleball. But I just want to say that, um, we brought us up to the, the best practices of twenty-five-year, twenty to twenty-five-year road reci- resurfacing, residential road resurfacing last year. And in my mind, when, um, I was one of the three votes for that, in my mind, the, um, point two that was being taken care of by that. So I want no millage increase is, is my personal position. And Commissioner Cannard?
I think that, I think that was a good plan. Last year, that went out the window, so I will not support the two-tenths increase.
Okay.
Commissioner Schleball?
I won't support the two-tenths, um, that we kind of addressed that plan. I'd like to see, um, some money come from growth and perhaps Duke, the Duke money.
Okay.
To cover that two million road resurfacing, if it's possible. I also want to say that I am thrilled with this board. In two thousand and twenty, I brought up that our reserves were too high and it went nowhere. And, um, we are not mandated to have a certain amount of reserves. There is a suggestion of what, seven to seventeen percent or eight to eight seventeen percent? When we were first elected, Commissioner Davis and I, it was right up there, if not eighteen percent, as I recall. And so to see a board that is saying, okay, let's not hold on to this taxpayer money anymore, is, um, it's very uplifting. And, um, I commend this board for being very cognizant of the taxpayer money. So thank you. money. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schleber. Commissioner Cannard?
Yeah, I would not agree to using the Duke special project funds for road resurfacing. That's, those are recurring expenses, and we don't know how long that money's recurring. So we need to find, if we're going to fund road resurfacing at, at the level that we've got it set at right now, that needs to be recurring money.
I would say that that needs to come out of growth, and I want it to remain at the 20 to 25-year mark because even at that point, it's still going to take a long time for us to catch up because that has, I'm sorry for the worn-out pun, but the can has been kicked down the road way too long. And one of the reasons that I took that unpopular vote last year was because it cost three, more, over three times more to actually rebuild a road than it does to repave it on time at, when it's a grade seven out of 10. So that's why, but that's why I don't want to go backward on that. But I don't, I don't want to raise the millage at all. That is absolutely my upper limit.
Okay. So then the consensus would be, we will look towards growth for additional road resurfacing.
I would assume with all the new development that we have that is coming online, that we can stay at the 20 to 25-year mark. But I do also want to agree with Commissioner Bayes that we really need to be looking at five-year projections on this stuff. So we're not making, we're, we're a little bit making decisions in a vacuum year over year, and that's not wise management. So whatever we can do to push that along, I know we have some things in, in play to start that. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, actually, it's Commissioner Schleber, then Finnegan, sorry.
I'm okay with whatever the board can find, that additional 2 million. I would like to know what we're going to do with the Duke money. You said it's, it's for, it's a reoccurring revenue. We understand that. But we have to figure out where that million's going to come from. So if the, if the staff can let us know what we have earmarked with that Duke money, what we plan to do with that Duke money this year, and what we did with it last year, just remind me of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Finnegan? Or are you waiting for an answer now? Sorry.
I don't think they can give an answer.
Okay, got it.
Do you have an answer for Commissioner or not?
No, go ahead.
I don't want to cut her off. I was going to give consensus, but it sounds like you already have it. We're not raising the millage rate. Just for Commissioner Schleber's edification, the max is 17% that can be put. And I don't remember exactly what it was in 2020, but we're saving at the highest we've ever saved. It's 17% this year. The last two years were around 16. I think last year might have been 16%. The year before that, I think 16.2%. Or maybe I have that backwards. And then in 2020, it wasn't this high, the percentage. I, was it 14%? I'd have to look, but I remember going back and looking at a 10-year span. So it is way higher now than it was in 2020, for, for sure.
We might have looked at different reports, but I went over that with Randy Oliver very, very detailed. And, you know, there was some fudging of, oh, this money is encumbered, so you can't count that as reserve. So, but it wasn't being spent. So it's easy to manipulate numbers in that sense. But when you really broke it down to what was in reserves and what was encumbered or allocated, it was at, very much so at the top, tippity-top, when I sat down with Randy Oliver. So that was in 2020, and I was, you know, first elected, and that was my thing. Don't hold on to taxpayer money.
The next slide has some employee information, the first being the cost of living adjustment. So the board enacted the pay-in-class study this year. All of our employees were adjusted to $15 per hour. But to account for compression, the lowest class coming in would be $14.50 per hour. The consultant recommended to me, you know, an annual increase to maintain the new plan and meet the increase of the minimum wage that was approved by the Florida voters. We have to meet that by October 1st of 2026. Based on that recommendation, as a consultant, we were including a 4% cost of living adjustment in the fiscal year '25 budget, which would bring the hourly rate to $15.08 this October The next one talks about the health insurance subsidy. This year, the board had decided to cover the increase in the family plan. That was $975 annually for those individuals that had selected that plan. Looking at an estimated increase of 13% for insurance, the subsidy for fiscal year '25 would total $2,083 annually for each individual that has that plan. We were looking for board direction to see if we would continue that subsidy, and if you wanted to cover the full subsidy of $2,083.
Ms. Doran, do you have the figure that it was last year? Because it's not 975, that was the increase.
Right. So the total before the subsidy was $630 per month for the family plan. And then the increase that was covered totaled $975 annually.
Because what I'm saying is that the, the public looking at this, 975 versus 2,083 is not 13%. So that's not apples to apples. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, we all voted to support the family plan before, and you're looking at a worst-case scenario of 13% increase?
That's correct.
On that family plan over last year?
Right. So what happens is, the family plan before we started the subsidy was $629. So when we're looking at the increase, we have to ba, add back in, so right now, it's $710 for the plan. It's 13% on top of that. So if we were to back off that 13% plus the subsidy that we're covering this year, it would total the $2,083 annually. So it would leave the individuals with the family plan to continue paying that $630 per month, and the board would be covering the increase of the past two years.
That is now clear as mud. Commissioners, anybody want to help me out? Or just move on?
Yeah, maybe, maybe it would help if you gave Commissioner Davis what the total amount was that it cost to do that last year, and what the total amount would be. Would that be helpful, what it would cover to cost that?
It's really more on, I'm looking at it more from a family basis because I definitely believe in supporting staff. It's one of the things about government work is that you don't get paid as much on the outside, but theoretically, we provide good benefits. So I'm li, I'm looking at the, the net differential for employees as well as what the total cost would be for us.
So if we kept, if we, if we paid like we said last year, what, what more per person do they owe this year?
So last year, there's 113 employees that currently have the family plan. So last year, with those 113 employees, we would have covered $114,075. This year, for those 113 employees, it would cost $235,415.
That's a pretty big lift. And what's the hit per family from year over year?
It would, this coming year, it would be an addition, if we didn't cover any of the subsidy, an additional $2,000, $2,083.
So we have, we, we have to cover at least some of it. Does any of my colleagues want to chime in?
I do.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Finnegan.
So last year, it seems that we wanted to do that because we finally got everyone to where they were supposed to be according to the study. And we didn't want to just, like, knock that back, and it was a difficult year. So the board as a whole decided to do that. My problem with doing that, as we move forward, and if we keep, it's going to go up every year, and if we're the ones doing it, we're only benefiting part of our staff. So the staff that take the family plan get, let's just say, more of a benefit or a perk from working here. The staff that are single or opt not to take the family plan, they're not getting the perk or the benefit. So instead of consistently benefiting only part of our staff, I'd rather see it in however we do our percentage to all of our staff. And then those that choose to have the family plan, they can make the decision to keep the family plan and pay them money or not. But we can't keep benefiting only a portion of our staff while the other ones get nothing.
Thank you. Commissioner Schleber, I thought I heard you audibly say you wanted to speak. No? Oh, okay. Over to you.
So is there a consensus to cover the full subsidy for us to put in the $235,000 into the budget? Do you want to see it in there first and then make a decision? Or do you want us to put in what we covered this year? Do we not want to cover it at all?
Commissioner Schleber, then Commissioner Cannard?
Again, circling back to being in a vacuum, do the constitutional officers cover this subsidy for their employees? And we're talking $200,000 this year? You know, it, I don't know what this 113-employee situation is. I don't know where they are in the pay scale. So I would say that I would be willing to, today, say, let's continue to cover it this year. It does need to be addressed, though, but you're looking for consensus, so I would say yes.
Commissioner Cannard?
I thought Commissioner Finnegan made a great point, that it's only benefiting a portion of the staff. So I would support funding that difference at the same level that we did last year.
The same percentage level, you mean?
The, what was it, six, $600 and change? I've left the page now.
The, it was 975 annually per?
975. Sorry about that.
Commissioner Bayes, do you want to weigh in? Yeah, they are looking for consensus. I think that it does need to be addressed from a fairness perspective. So if you want to put the full amount in for this planning right now, that's fine with me, but I would really like to see further figures and a system of fairness among all And then bring that down a little bit. It's a little bit like what we did with the nonprofits that used to get subsidies from the county. We gave them 10 years to, to reducing it 10% every year. And, you know, to some, we can't hit them with something like that overnight. It's just way too big. So, but look at it from a more of a, a fairness perspective over all employees and over years to come because health insurance is continuing to go crazy. Was that also clear as mud? I'm getting a baffled look from you.
With, with, right. So would there be three that would be willing to fund it at last year's rate?
Commissioner Finnegan?
I don't think that we should fund it again if, if the board wanted to fund last year. What I don't want to do is take something away from employees. You could, we could dig ourselves out of this hole and just add that to the pay, like whatever that dollar amount is. Fairness would be to all employees and then not do this again. You, you fix that in a fair way, which we did not do last year. So first and foremost, I don't know who, who will get consensus from. Back ourselves out of this and just fix it where, where they're having the money and they're taking care of it themselves. If they don't want to do that, I would be okay with just keeping where it was last year, and then they'll have to, you know, figure that out moving forward. And then we can address separately the percentage or, or how we are paying staff this year. But we're, the more we do this, the deeper in a hole we're going to get, and it will cause conflict. I mean, when it's hundreds of dollars coming, if we did this every year, you're going to have other staff very upset. We, we don't want to go down that road, trust me.
I think I just need more. I, I should have flagged this in my briefing yesterday, and I'm flagging it now, so my apologies. I just want more information on it before I can come up with what, if, if we could readdress that portion at a later meeting when we have a little bit more clear direction on exactly what percentages are of support for various staff benefits and things like that. Because I, I think all of us who've spoken are definitely hearing the fairness perspective. And, but I don't also want to T-bone families at the intersection, so to speak. So we need to look at how to fix this globally going forward. So if we could get a little bit more clear options, that would be great.
Okay.
Does that help bring it in for something of a landing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Schleber?
The reason why I'm going to say at the level that you have suggested, the 200,000, is because what comes to my mind is, these are young families. They have family, they have two or more children that they're having to support, and insurance is crazy expensive. But the, the, so a lot of times, if you were just to statistically look at who, the 113 employees, that's why, again, what Commissioner Bayes said, we're in a vacuum, are those 113 employees entry-level employees? Because a lot of the 20-year employees, 25-year employees, they're empty nesters. So they don't need that family plan. So it's, it, is it fair that they're making this much money? No, they've worked 25 years. Is it fair that these people are entry-level and they have little babies? No, it, it, it's never going to be fair. So that's why I think to, if you wanted a consensus, let's start at this level. We could always go down, but if we start here, we, we're not necessarily going to go up. So I'm going to stay firm on that one because, again, we're in a vacuum. We don't know the 113 employees. We don't know the situations. Would this make us lose a key employee because the private sector will take care of everything? And to replace an employee is always a lot more expensive than, you know, what it would cost for their insurance.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Family plan, correct me if I'm wrong, it does not mean children. It's just even a spouse. You have to get the whole family plan, even if there is someone. So just because there's no children in the household, they may still have the family plan.
So it's, when they do have kids, it's a little bit like paying for schools when you don't have kids in the school system. It's just part of it is doing right by your community. I would just like more information before I make a final decision on that.
Do you want more information about the 113 employees that have it?
No, just the, the money aspect.
Okay.
You know, so that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, good discussion. This is a little bit, a little bit heavier discussion early on in the year. I like it about the budget. I think we, the discussion starts with what can we afford, rather than, you know, what is it that we're going to provide for, you know, this family or this family or these individuals? What can we afford? None of this gets paid for unless we take money from other families in the county and redistribute it to these families. So we, the discussion has to start with, what can the county afford in terms of benefits package? And if that means that, that we don't cover the difference in the family plan, then that's what it means. I, I don't think that, that we go to, all right, we need to take more money from the rest of the taxpayers so we can put a better package out there. We covered it last year. If the, if the consensus ultimately is that we're going to cover it at the same level, I'm fine with that. But I, I don't think that, that I will get to covering an additional, you know, that additional what? additional, what, $1,400, something like that, or whatever. Getting to, getting to a total of 20, I should stay on that page. Getting to a total of $2,000, so an additional 1,100 bucks, times 113 individuals are, are family plan folks, I don't think I'll get there.
Okay. Carry on.
So this slide has the budget, a little blurb from the budget guideline letter that gets sent out to the constitutional officers. So obviously, they're going to start putting their budget together as well. I know some of us had discussed during briefings, if there was additional information you would also like to request from the constitutional officers on top of their budget, so we could add that to the letter. And then obviously Commissioner Bayes brought up possibly meeting with them prior to getting their budget. So any guidance the board has as far as what you would like to receive from the constitutional officers, if you would like to meet with them prior, if you would like another meeting in June to go over their budget. We would also, since you're not interested in increasing the millage, we would provide them with that information. However, we would still have to provide them, obviously, a guideline as far as what to come in at. So if 3% is what the board is comfortable with, we believe we'll cover that in growth. We would not require increase in millage for that, then that is the number we will provide the constitutional officers. If we believe 4% is comfortable and, you know, we have no problem believing that we will get 4% growth, then that is the number we can provide them. So any guidance on what you would like us to include in this letter?
The, the 3% to 4% is based on inflation, not growth, I thought.
We can label it either way. We're just giving them a percentage they have to come in at. So it could be 2% growth, 2% inflation, so you need to come in at 4%. We could say it's 3% growth, we believe inflation will be 7%, but we still need you to come in at 4%, which is what happened a few years ago. It was 8%, however, we told them they needed to stick to 6 and 1/2 when they did their budget. So really, this is a guideline for them when they're putting it together so that they don't, again, put together a budget that has a 10% increase where the board is not comfortable increasing the millage, but then in order to cover their budget, we may have to increase, you know, the millage.
Board? Consensus, anyone? Commissioner Kennard?
Our guidance last year was, was rollback plus 3%?
No, last year we just-
With the letter that we sent out?
No. It, it was just, we asked them to come in at 3%. So the year before that, we had rollback plus growth plus inflation, which totaled 8%, but we told them to come in at 6 and 1/2.
And by growth in that, are we talking about taxable value or population? Because the, the costs involve our population. The revenue involved is taxable value growth.
Well, it's just, looking at the taxable value, so when we go and we apply the millage to the taxable value, as the taxable value goes up, obviously, even with the same millage, you're going to generate additional revenue. So we don't unfortunately know any numbers or where that's going to come in at. But like, if you look at the taxable value slide, you can see it's generally 3, 4% in there. So we would say we're comfortable, 3 or 4%, the constitutional officer is coming in at, hoping that it would be within the additional funds that we receive from growth with the same millage.
Commissioner Bayes?
So Mr. Howard or Erin, either one of you can answer this. What do you anticipate our revenue to be in five years?
I don't have that number. I think you're obviously, Erin's working with a third party.
What do you anticipate our revenue to be in one year?
So what I can tell you is that through the state, EDR has said they do not believe that double-digit growth will continue. So what that ends up being, we don't know, but we would not anticipate that we would keep having 11% increase in taxable value.
So what would you anticipate our population increase to be over the next five years?
I have no idea. Hopefully, our five-year financial, you know, report will include that.
Well, that, I, I guess that's my point. This, to me, we need to, instead of having, setting up here and we have constitutional officers come there and talk to us, that's not a conversation. We need to go to room 166 and we need to sit around a table and we need to have a conversation about what is our anticipated revenue? What is our anticipated population? What is our road capacity issues? We know what we've already permitted to come online. What is going to be the anticipated residential versus commercial? And what does that look like? What are the additional services that are going to be needed out of that EMS? Fire, police. What's job growth look like? What does the space needs look like? What does the supervisor elections need for the anticipated population growth? What are the courts going to need for this anticipated population growth? And what is that anticipated cost associated with that? We are setting up here, shooting arrows, that we have no idea what we're talking about and trying to make decisions on something that we haven't developed a business plan for. I, I, I mean, I, I can't, I can't answer this. It's a $400 million a year budget. And right now, even when I say we're not caught up with personnel to what we were in 2008, I'm not saying that because I'm off on a rant to, to increase, I said population, I mean employees. But when I go and I talk to our public works director and we have one engineer and we can't keep up with what we've got on our plate right now, we have an issue. And we need to be talking about it. We can't just raise the rug up and sweep it under and pretend like it doesn't exist and then try to throw numbers at it, that we have no idea what we're talking about. I just, I, I firmly believe that we're playing a fool's game if we don't get to the table because we don't, we haven't even talked about the CIP. And what's the point of going through the gyration of putting a CIP together if nobody talks about it? We don't even know. I mean, what's the end, what is the lifespan of a radio system or a CAD system and what does it cost? And do we, if it's a six-year radio system, do we finance it for 10? It's like doing a bad car deal. But these are the, these are the times. It's now time, we, we should be grownups now. We should put our big boy panties on and we should go to town and we should all, we could have whiteboards around the room and get the, the citizens involved and really hone this down. They get mad because we never talk about it. We talk about it in a vacuum and they don't understand. There's an old saying, what gets measured gets done? We need to start measuring it. And I don't see that there's any better time than right now. We've got explosive growth coming our way. We just did the map for the Tampa General Hospital and their CEO. And we know what's out there. We know what's coming our way. But we haven't even talked about road capacity. We know right now that 491, in today's dollars, to finish it is $170 million. Where's that in our budget? Where's our conversation about that? I mean, if, if, if the homestead exemption would have passed this year, it would have come $6 million out of our taxable roll of Ad Valorem. 6 million. That's what Tallahassee would have decided for you. They decided that we're going to set up homeless camps, but they didn't send any money with it. These are the conversations that we need to have. And it's not sitting here and us picking and choosing what we're going to do and, and saying, well, we're going to do up and down. I, I mean, I've never done a business like that, and I certainly don't think Tampa General does that, and I don't think Duke does that. I don't think any other, any other business does this. And it's, I just, I'm very adamant, if you want my input, then let's do real business.
When is the five-year plan due, to be presented to us? Five-year projections? We have a couple different things, right? It's growth and?
Yeah, there's, I think Erin's working on that now, which is, I mean, these are all good, good input, unfortunately. Like I said, you told me about the canal, you didn't tell me about the alligators when I came here. There's a lot of alligators. So we're trying to dig out of this thing, and a lot of these things are proactive things, but they take time to do. And then you still have to continue to move, move progress forward. So you're going to see something in April, this interactive growth management tool, which I think is going to take this counting in the 21st century. It's going to let you look at fire stations, libraries, other things, you're going to new capacity and things like that, which you desperately need as a tool to manage. And what doesn't get measured, doesn't get done, that's something I say all the time. And this five-year forecasting tool is going to be critically important as well, but that takes time to do. And I think they're working on that staff, but maybe the latest on that to get that to the board, but it's in progress.
Yeah, so we had looked at a firm that NGN had recommended, and so we are trying to piggyback to complete that five-year, they call it a strategic plan, financial strategic plan.
And they will be, that'll be done when and presented to us?
I would not anticipate it'll be done before budget this year.
So I share a lot of Commissioner Bay's frustration in terms of making decisions in a vacuum. This is now my fourth budget, and it's tough. And what I was saying in regard to the constitutionals on inflation versus taxable value versus population. So on the cost side of the equation is more population and more inflation creates increased cost to provide the same level services that you did the prior year. So obviously, those revenues have to come from somewhere. And hopefully, it just comes from the taxable value growth without an increase in, in millage rate. So let's, can we all promise that this is going to be the last year that we have to, as she said, shoot arrows and not really see the target clearly? Because it would be very helpful to have those five-year projections. And so by next budget season, whoever's sitting up here hopefully has a much longer range plan to work with.
Yeah, so I think that was something we had talked about for the 2024 targets for action.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, this goes hand in hand with strategic planning, that at, at least we now have a strategic plan, which I'm thankful that we got moving through, so.
Documentations, I looked, I think the last time this exercise was done in '07, I think '07, '08, when this exercise was done, so it's been that long. So it's not something that's continued on. Actually, I like two-year budgets. To be honest with you, I don't like one-year budgets. I think it's a better way of doing business. I've talked to Erin about that, but all these things are important. The other challenge is across the country is even getting vendors to do this work is another challenge that we're facing because everything's going on. And especially, this is such a unique niche as well. It's challenging to get, you know, some of these contractors as well to work with our timelines. And of course, they just sometimes don't align because you've got to continue to do business and adopt budgets. But I agree, those are important documents to have. This is proactive approaches that you're doing. The things that you adopted this year for your strategic plan are not ribbon-cutting ceremonies, but they're proactive and it's going to take you to the 21st century. And I applaud the board for being visionary to get this stuff done, but we got to now execute, deliver for the future. So I think we'll be in a very good position next year.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Yeah, well, it's difficult for me to decide what percentage. I think that we are stabbing in the dark. You know, you give, you say 3%. Well, they're going to come back and say whatever they need. I never hear any year, start from 0%. And then if you just can't make that work, show us why. And it might be, well, because we, we've hit the max on our budget and, you know, we have to do a bump in employee salary and our insurance and our state mandated retirement is higher, or we really need this software. Because when you just do a random percent, all of our constitutionals are vastly different and their budgets are vastly different. So for one, 3% might be like, wow, we've covered everything and we get a little windfall, you know? So we're going to just budget it in, our 3%. Whereas another agency may really struggle and that could not nearly be enough, just depending on their needs. So I think to, to do a percent, Commissioner Bayes is absolutely right, we don't have any information to assign that. So, I mean, if we're just going to be arbitrary, say 0%, make your last year's budget work. And if it can't work, show us why it doesn't work. Where do, where do you need the money? I mean, we're shooting in the dark.
Yeah, so we can provide that guidance and we have done that in previous years. So if that is the consensus of the board, that is what we will ask the constitutional officers for.
Commissioner Schleber?
I would agree with that. If, if we are shooting in the dark, which we are, then just say, okay, zero increase, let's work with your budget and then explain why you can't.
Commissioner Bayes?
He's our largest taxpayer now.
I don't know offhand, I'd have to look. I know Duke is only like 14, 15%.
Well, and I throw this out there just to give pause for thought. Because this taxable value history that you presented right here, I was a commissioner between 2010 and 2014, and it was the roughest financial times that this county has ever experienced, ever. And we spent down reserves to keep it afloat. Nobody ever lost any service, but that's how your reserves got spent. And this is why I think that looking out, looking into the future is so important, is because what happened was not only we were in the Great Recession, but Duke came in in September of 2012 and said, the gentleman's handshake that you had, agreement that you had with Progress Energy on the pollution control device, we're no longer going to pay taxes on that. Our fiscal budget started October 1, and that meant $19 million got cut, just like that overnight, out of our budget. You want to talk about a free-for-all? We were free-falling. It was some serious times, and not only did they cut that out of our budget, they took the 600 highest-page wage earners and moved them to North Carolina. So that $300,000 house became $150,000 house. And you all know what the intrinsic value of the person that can afford a $300,000 house and a person that can afford a $150,000 house, what that does to your economy. This, that is an exact example of why it's so important to look into the future. We need to know who our biggest taxpayers are. We need to know and understand, what if they have a hiccup? What if something seriously happens to this community? Those are the reasons why you look to the future and you estimate what's going on. I don't know how else to put it. I, I, I just, I lived through the Great Recession and I'm living through the Great Inflation. So I've seen, I've seen both, both periods. And neither one are easy. But that's why it's critical that we take a very long look at where we're going and how we're going to get there and how we're, what we're going to do. Because not only do we have this great inflation, we have extreme growth that we are so woefully behind in being able- that we are so woefully behind in being able to service it. And I, I hope, I, I seriously hope this board takes this as serious as I do, because if we don't, we're in trouble. I mean, we're already in trouble, but we're going to be in really big trouble.
Commissioner Bayes, what would you like to, on the letter to constitutionals 0, 3, 4? What's your pleasure?
I think that's, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't think that that's a, a fair game for them. I think exactly what I said. Make it next week, make it two weeks from ma, make it three weeks, but let's go in a room. Let's talk about this. It's not fair to them to go start at zero. I mean, you're telling them at zero, you're, you know, you're not even going to give raises? Or, I mean, what if they need a new computer system? I, I have no idea. That's a very unfair position to put anybody in, because it's not realistic. But why wouldn't we sit in a room and have these conversations? And people talk about what, what their needs are today and what they see their needs are a year, two years, three years, four years from now? Then we have, we have some general idea where we're going. Right now, I mean, I don't think half the public even understands that we have enterprise funds. There's some, some departments that don't even get funded out of Ad Valorem. But I think it's not only our job to have a conversation with, with our partners, these constitutional officers, the part, the real partners are the taxpayers. And, and we need to have a conversation with the taxpayers. You need to know what you're funding and why you're funding it. Government can't give you what it has not previously taken from you. So I, I think that we've, I think we have a real opportunity here to work with each other. I don't think, you know, you pick up the paper, or you can read blogs on social media, whatever you want to read, and, and we can be made to be the bad elephant. We're not the bad elephant. It's, it's no different than like your parents at Christmas time. We want to give you everything you ever asked for, but it's got to come from somewhere. And we want to give it to you, but we have to figure out how we're going to get there to give it to you. And it's, we want to make your Christmas really special. And I think that's what we're trying to do. We're, we're trying to make Citrus County special. But we've got to have a path, how we work together to get there. And we want you to understand it. We don't want you to be in the dark, we don't want you to be in the vacuum. But it, you can't get there with not paying for it either. So it, there has to be a two-way street of understanding of where we're going and how we're going to get there.
Commissioner Bayes, do you have a number to put on the letter then?
I just told you, I, I think that's a, a very unfair...
I mean, the, I understand that, but we, we need to help...
You guys, you guys pick, because I think that I, I just...
Commissioner Finnegan?
Well, just to clarify, I, I would agree, Commissioner Bayes, that zero would be unfair. But my point was, everyone's different. So we wouldn't obviously give anyone zero, but maybe someone needs 1%. And we've said 3. Maybe somebody needs 6%. It's just, I was trying to make your point that it's random. How, how do we know what their needs are? So let them tell us what the needs are. And I mean, I, I guess we, at the end, will say no.
Kind of like zero-based budgeting?
Yeah, like, okay, we're, we're, that's what we're doing, right? This is, we're starting with X point, and we either have to bring more money in. And it seems like everyone said this year, we don't want to do that. So if new growth provides us money, that's fine. But now we have that small little pot of money for all these things we have to do. So, yeah, I'm sure no one's going to get 0%, but why give them 4% if they really need 2%? We don't know that. We have no... I, I think she got, I just wanted to explain, we're, we're kind of saying the same thing, just in a different way.
Commissioner Schleball?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Nope, okay. I'm fine with that. The, the issue, of course, is that if we don't hold to whatever number we give them, say, we could put 3% in the letter, and then we, they're always going to ask for more if they need it. And so just give them the guidelines that they need to keep it tight. Commissioner Kennard, did you want to say anything on this, on the guidelines?
No, I'm fine with the letter stating with 0%.
Okay.
You'll still have new growth in there.
Yeah.
Is there any additional information the board would like with those budgets? Or would you like to set up a meeting as Commissioner Bayes requested?
I do think that in concert with the presentation that we're going to get for the five-year growth projections and so forth, I do think it would be ideal to encourage all the constitutionals to come to us with at least a five-year strategic plan briefing. And whether we do that as a workshop or as part of the presentation they give us normally, however that happens, you know, I'm, I push strategic planning to begin with. I like to look long-term, and we need all of our partners to be looking long-term. So the answer is yes, if it takes that form that she suggested, that's fine, or it may take another form. But five, you know, looking out at least five years.
Okay, and what about a presentation or a meeting? Is there consensus to set up a meeting?
You mean a workshop and, as Commissioner Bayes suggested? I'm fine with that. Commissioner Kennard? Yeah, Commissioner Schleball, I'm sorry, I had to see that you're on the list.
I just think that we need to have this meeting. I think it would behoove the county to have this meeting with the constitutional officers, because just even, I'll use the sheriff's budget, for example. We gave him exactly what he needed. It was well over the 3% we asked him to stay within. And we don't know if all those employees have been hired. We, we're, you know, we don't know how much, you know, helicopter sales or boat, boat purchases, different things like that. And, you know, let's have a real honest conversation with the constitutionals. And that's why I went with a 0% increase, because let's start there and build, instead of just think it's a very good point. Why give them 4% if they're like, hey, I can really do with just 3%? Because, so I want, I would like a meeting. And we have the CIP meeting workshop, April 23. Can we do it around that time, or? I mean, do we have time to notice the public? Question.
Do you know how long they will need to notice for that?
And you certainly have enough time by April 20.
The bigger issue might be that they need to pull together a five-year plan if they don't already have one. So that's a bit tight for that. However, the conversation needs to happen. I, I want this county to be working way out and much more organized and not shooting in the dark by next budget cycle. And that means all of our constitutional partners too. If they want us, our buy-in on funding what they say their budget is, it needs to be presented with a lot of forethought and 100% transparency in the budget, in their budgets, with obvious small reductions for public security, which would be experienced specifically by the sheriff and the SOE. But other than that, we need a lot, a deep level of transparency in the budget, the same as we give to citizens. So, and definitely forethought. So if they can have a general conversation by April 20, great, but someone needs to reach out to the constitutionals and, and figure that out.
And also saying we'd like to have that not here, we'd want to have it somewhere else. Which I think the CIP's...
Well, room 166 is a lot more collegial, that we can be seated around a, a big U, so.
So then would you look to want to have that meeting prior to the CIP? So they can present any capital projects they may have or any issues they may be including in their budget, new staff and such?
It does seem to sort of go hand in hand.
Okay, so we'll look for dates.
We would just work at schedules and see what calendars and things like that and report back.
And I'm, I'm with Commissioner Kennard. I appreciate this in-depth conversation, this early in the process, because it needs to happen. We've got to change things. But I am about 60% done with cough drops, so we need to move this along. Or it's going to get real ugly up here. Commissioner Bayes, oh, you're done? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just, just so this works, I am concerned about the time turnaround. So if they have capital improvement projects, I know you want that before our meeting. Maybe it could come in stages. I mean, we do have a preliminary budget hearing. They, they may need that time. I don't know if all of those could be more than, more than what it has been, where it's more of a conversation with everyone. I think the last one, everyone didn't even come to that. So I don't know if that would be a more appropriate time, is just to kind of keep them on the same timeline, just make, make those hearings a little more robust. Just a suggestion, I'm not, I'm not really sure how that would work. I'm just afraid that they're going to come back and say, are you kidding? We, we were so, we were ready to have our numbers by a certain date. We can't have them in 30 days. That's just kind of my fear.
Staff will get back to us, yes?
We will, we'll, we'll work on it.
Okay, and do you need to talk about the dates?
Yes, the last, the last slide has the dates. CIP workshop is April 23. The preliminary budget hearing is July 24. The tentative budget hearing is September 5. And the final budget hearing is September 24. And that is it, unless there are any other questions?
Is there any, on the September 5, is there any room for that date? I know it's so tight, I was just wondering.
We can look at it, we can look at the trim calendar.
I had a, I, I mean, I will change my schedule, but if there is any room, I had a speaking engagement on that night.
Okay, we will look.
Okay. My apologies to Open to the Public. In hindsight, I should have just let Open to the Public go and pushed our time certain, since it was an internal time certain, and we all had to be here anyway. External ones, I try to always stick to those, because there are people that have to be elsewhere. So I'm going to reopen Open to the Public. You need to fill out a green card if you haven't already, and hand it to the clerk. You can do that afterwards if you prefer. It's three minutes, unless you have a letter on file, but you need to let us know. If you do have a letter on file, you get five minutes. Please watch the clock, hopefully it's working now. It will go to yellow when you have one minute left. And... Go ahead, first speaker, and state your name for the record.
My name is Joshua Bithay.
Hang on, and pause the timer for just one second. Doc, if y'all want to sit in those first two chairs and just note that, everybody note that you go next. If you're having trouble standing, I can relate to that these days. Anyway, carry on, I'm sorry, state your name again.
My name is Joshua Bithay. Thank you so much for hearing me out. I, I see that we're dealing with a lot of budget constraints, despite the growth in the county. So I, I really hope this doesn't fall on deaf, deaf ears. I was laid off a month ago from my position as a tax consultant in a county firm, which is what allows me to be here today, to talk about this. I moved my family down last year to take advantage of, well, I had a baby, and I wanted to be near family. And we saw the, the housing market, and we wanted to move back before, we weren't able to afford anything. We're trying to build a homestead in Crystal River, in Crystal Manor, actually. And come to find out, it's an $8,000 impact fee to get started, before we even get started on anything, really. That's, that's, that's a major setback. And, 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 you know, advocating for fundamental fairness, I'd like to see some sort of waiver or exemption for people under a certain threshold of income or assets. I know we can't discriminate against out-of-staters, that would be unconstitutional. But I do believe it would be fair to put in some sort of exemption or waiver process or rate. I know it would be arbitrary wherever it's set, I understand that. But we know it's getting harder every day for, across the country, for working-class families to attain a modest, middle-class existence. Just a modest comfortability, you know, which, which a big part of that, the main part of that is being able to own your own home. In my case, build my own home. I decided I wanted to build my own home rather than buy somebody else's home, based on the market. Even if I hadn't lost my job a month ago, this would still have been two months of income and a major setback for us. I believe there is a way we can strike a balance policy-wise. How that looks, a gentleman told me to look up some examples of other counties to provide to him. I will look into that. But I, I do believe it, it, we could achieve the, the goals, obviously, to fund what we need to fund with the amount of growth coming in from people out of state, which are clearly likely not to meet those thresholds. They will exceed those thresholds more often than not. Whereas people like myself, who grew up here in Florida, we need a fighting chance. And it's hard, the, the, the economy in Florida already isn't great compared to other places, which makes it harder on us as more people move here. I understand demographic changes are, what Florida is, it defines Florida, and it's no one person's fault. But to achieve the, the, the policy, you know, goals that I think we should all have in mind to give people, working-class people like myself and my, my wife, a fighting chance at that, you know, middle-class comfortability that people like my brother have already gained through his government job over the last 20 years, whereas me, I invested in myself and went to school, got two law degrees, and now that's seeming like a really, really bad decision, but I can do about that now. I've already invested that time into myself and in my family, and I'm almost 40 years old, and I'm still renting. So I, I would, I would like, thank you.
We do have, I, I, we typically don't answer, but I, very quickly, staff can get your name to follow up if you wanted to, Parks, I know you have a baby with you. But we do have low-income impact fees, but there's some restrictions on what the size of the house is. So can someone get us, okay, follow that gentleman over there? Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm Dr. Bruce Bryn, Homosassa, Florida. After listening to the whole last thing on budgets, what I have to say is very miniscule. I thought of just coming up and just saying, hey, I'll just send you an email. But that's been done before. The Citrus County Republican Executive Committee, of which I'm a member, led by Mike Moberly, did a resolution on February 19. And this resolution was sent to you all by registered mail. And then it was followed up by emails to each of, of you five. Most of the emails were ignored, some about this, about this resolution. The resolution is of, you might say it's a political nature, but I don't think so. It's about our country, it's about our liberty, it's about our freedoms. It's the resolution that's, that's about the orchestrated Biden Justice Department stuff and the Democratic Party, the blatant attempt to steal the election from President Trump. And you guys are all on the ballot as Republicans. I voted for you because you had the R after your name. And so this is an important thing to me, that we, in this county, we're three Republicans to one Democrat. The REC pays for the booths at the Howard Flea Market. They pay for the booth at the Strawberry Festival. I've seen many of you there. We, we help do those candidate petition cards that help you save about $4,300 for running for reelection. And I saw you there, Jeff, as well, and, and Ruthie and Holly. I, I went over to your booth and got your, your, your information. So I, I spent seven Sundays in a row and, and almost 12 Saturdays with the REC working on this. And we would like for you to receive this resolution and add it to your agenda. We want it added to the agenda. I looked on agenda today and it wasn't there. And that's what we're asking for.
Thank you, Doc.
Can you say anything about it? Will, will you get it on the agenda?
We normally address everyone after everyone spoke, and it's just that young man needed to leave with his child. Although I guess he's almost 40.
He's important, my children are gone. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Bryn, 138 Daisy Street, Homosassa, Florida. And I too want to congratulate all of you before I say what I came to say about the discussion with the budget and your thinking and that you really are working hard at it. And I appreciate... And I appreciate that. And I congratulate you in that respect. Before this meeting and every other meeting I think that you have, we all recite the pledge of allegiance. And we pledge to support the flag, our nation, our country, our republic, and that we appreciate and maintain the freedom and integrity of our country. But we're losing our country as a nation. And a part of that, a big part of that is that we do not have equal justice under the law anymore. And if we don't stand up and do something, we're going to end up as a banana republic. And none of this work that you're doing is going to matter for much of anything, truthfully. And I just want to ask that you support this amendment because we do need, if we have no freedom, if we don't have justice, we don't have a country. And we're on the threshold of a scary time. And this is a very small thing that you can do to put this amendment on the agenda. The resolution, yeah. And I would appreciate it very much. And I really feel that this is a trying time, not only with budget, with money, with our border. We have to maintain and, oh goodness, I love America. And I want to keep the country that we have and the liberties that we have and the freedom that we have. Because I'm a proud American and I think we have a responsibility to stand up and let people know that we care and that there are things every one of us can do. And if we don't have a legal system that will be fair and just, we don't have a country, folks. So I do think this is way beyond politics. This has to do with America. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryn.
Hello, my name is Jesse Rumson from La Canto. And I didn't realize that that resolution was going to be such a popular topic for the Open to the Public. But I too am here to speak on behalf of the REC, passing their Weaponization of Government Resolution. And I would like to see it on your agenda for the next meeting here. I think it's important that even as a symbolic gesture, that we all stand up and we give a voice to the people of Citrus County and to stand up for the Constitution and the unlawful prosecution of people based on political opinions and the weaponization of not only the DOJ but also the justice system. And in voicing our opinions towards that, we can at least show to the greater country that we don't stand for those kind of constitutional violations, that we stand up for our fellow citizens and that it's wrong regardless of which party or who's enacting these policies, that we all need to stand up for each other as a country, as a free state, and as a free people. And if this board would pass that, like I said, even as an ideological movement forward, that we can all stand together and oppose that sort of weaponization as not only a county but as a board and then as a state and as a country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Janine Eady and I live in Inverness Village 4. Before I address the photos and the emails that I sent to all Commissioners, the Attorney and the Administrator, I have a couple of questions to start out with. Mr. Howard called me following the first BOCC meeting in February to assure me that he had or was talking to the city regarding grants. So I'd like to know where that is and where the progress is towards the Septic to Sewer Grant or any other sources of revenue that may help to support our situation and would reduce the ridiculous $109,000 assessment that is out there right now for each resident of IV4. And number two, if there are any updates from the Attorney General on the letter that was sent and signed by all the Commissioners up before you, or up here. Then next, regarding my photos and the emails that I sent to all of you. We are taxpaying citizens and residents of Citrus County. When does our safety matter? And as a really quick example, recently with the rains, we have a resident that lives two doors down from us dealing with cancer and treatments and the effects of those treatments. In the middle of the night, it was raining. He couldn't breathe. They jumped in the car to go to the emergency room to get some assistance. They had to turn around and waste valuable minutes to go back and get their truck because they couldn't get through the roads. That's uncalled for. And it hurts me that they have to live with that. That's a safety issue. That's a health issue. It is becoming almost impossible to navigate the maze of trenches and ditches to not only get out of driveways and get out of the development. And it is a development, folks. Got lots of documents that says it's a development and it was a debacle or a hot mess. Yes, to get to Independence Highway, our safety is also a debacle. We have to slow down so much to get in or out of either Dawson or Walker Street. Someone is going to be seriously injured or a death is going to occur at those pieces. When is emergency maintenance going to be done on the road so that at least our safety is an issue and you care about us as residents of this county? We are paying taxes in this county and we deserve a safe place to live. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ross Frederiksen, resident of IV4. I'm also a taxpayer of Citrus County. It has been stated that some of you on this board feel betrayed by some of the residents of IV4. I want to tell you what betrayal feels like. I've worked my entire life, married my high school sweetheart, raised a family, lost my wife of 32 years to leukemia. I've been blessed to find a new love, finally being able to retire and move to the great state of Florida, which were or was our dream with my current wife all along. My move to Florida has been a complete nightmare, plain and simple. As most people of IV4, they are retired as I am and are on a fixed income. We built our dream home, prepared for the last chapter of our lives to find out we have been sold out by previous Board of County Commissioners who knowingly knew that IV4 would one day be a disaster, who knowingly approved utilities to be brought into IV4, who knowingly closed their eyes to the DEP and SwiftMud recommendations. On top of all that, there is no infrastructure or roads, which has created this debacle. You have destroyed my dream, along with so many other people of IV4. No one can afford an $8,600 a year MSBU for 20 years. And that is what we're being told is the only solution we have at this point. Ridiculous. We have been betrayed by the people who were elected to protect us, the Citrus County Board of Commissioners. I pray that someone from the county will come forward and finally accept responsibility for this self-created disaster. I pray that the Florida Attorney General finds that the county is somewhat responsible and negligent for this disaster. I pray that no one gets hurt or dies because the county fails to address the lack of infrastructure and roads in IV4. Thank you and have a fantastic day.
Next, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Bowden van Kron, or just call me Bow in English. I have to do this in English. I'm from the Netherlands, so excuse me when something goes wrong. We are waiting for a permit and we are living on 4348 East Bennett Street. And that's in your vision, also part of IV4. But this area is existing for more than 20 years. It's Arlington Street, Commercial Lane, Amsterdam Street, Bennett Street. We have streets. We have stormwater systems. We have everything. So we don't know why there is a moratorium on our part of IV4 because it's existing for a long time. So that's one of my questions. And the other question is, there is another house that's on Commercial Lane that's also IV4. They asked for a permit for a pool. They started January 4th. And the pool issue, it was issued on February 8th. It's exactly the same situation. We are waiting for months. Nothing happens. They are asking in January and 8th of February, they have their permits. Please explain how that's possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. By the way, I was watching on the video in the back. I just had to go cough without worrying about disturbing everyone.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Carmen Kubitschek, Inverness Village 4. Good afternoon again. I have several questions. A few meetings back, the board here voted for a stop order. No work to be done at all in Inverness Village 4. The reply was received, the administrator, Mr. Howard, went onto the newspaper and said that, you know, they couldn't do that. But this board has never rescinded on that stop order. So I'm requesting to know why. Also, the moratorium that previously was stated is due to expire on April the 15th. And it started, I believe, on April 25th of last year. So we're going on to a year. I want to know what the board has planned after that. As a gentleman previously stated, there's no new permits being given in Inverness Village 4 for established residents that have been living there for years. And I'm one of those. I'm coming up on two years living there. And we're not allowed, this moratorium actually is also penalizing the residents that have been living there. You know, we want to beautify. We want to improve our homes and we're not allowed to do that because of the moratorium that I believed was supposed to be just for the builder. But it turns out that everyone is included in that. The other thing that someone kind of mentioned earlier is we would like an update. I want an update on the letter that was sent to the Attorney General, Ashley Moody. We still haven't received a response. I'm really disappointed because a lot of these things should have been addressed previously and it hasn't. And it is a hot mess. But you know, you talk about bad actors. You can't have bad actors if you don't have bad directors and producers. And that's how I see the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is James Joseph Gunther from Homosassa. On March 6, 2024, I addressed the Value Adjustment Board regarding my petitions 24, 25, 46, and 47. I advised the board that I had exhausted the administrative process and reported that I did not see evidence of due process. My full statement will be available on the Agenda and Minutes page of the Commissioners' website. At the conclusion of my statement, the board then proceeded to ask their counsel to respond to my statement. However, the board had no questions for me. Thus, the board proceeded to adopt the flawed magistrate decisions. As a taxpayer, I am appalled that none of the board members had questions for me, especially the citizen members of the board. The Florida Constitution requires the board to afford taxpayers basic due process. In practice, at least from my own experience, the fairness of the board and its contract special magistrates is merely sophistry. I want to thank all of the county employees who helped me throughout the process, too many to name. I only wish that the Appraiser and the Value Adjustment Board's special magistrates can learn what it means to conduct hearings with basic fairness and due process. If I can be of assistance, let me know. You know where to find me. Thank you. Shalom.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. Good afternoon to the Board of County Commissioners, the staff, the attorneys, the fellow Citrus County citizens. I'm here to just
State your name for the record.
Oh, yeah. Joy Wilston. Thank you. I know most of you have probably seen a lot of these articles, Missoula Supports Homeless Bill. And there's been other ones prior to that, youth homeless numbers are staggering in Citrus County. And a couple of, they interviewed some homeless that were going to be run off. Her picture's in here again this week, Donna Collins. And another one, his name, he was 19-year-old with a white dog. Anyway, it's on my heart to speak about it. And I have a story here to share with you. This is from Proverbs, "The merciful man does good for his own soul, but he who is cruel troubles his own flesh," Proverbs 11:17. And this is a story. One night in 1935, Fiorello H. Legardia, Mayor of New York, showed up at a night court in the poorest ward of the city. He dismissed the judge for the evening and took over the bench. One case involved an elderly woman who was caught stealing bread to feed her grandchildren. Legardia said, "I've got to punish you $10 or 10 days in jail." As he spoke, he threw $10 into his hat. He then fined everyone in the courtroom $0.50 for living in a city where a person has to steal bread so that her grandchildren can eat. The hat was passed around and the woman left the courtroom with her fine paid and an additional $47.50. I have a hat here. I've got $20 in here. I'm willing to pass this around. But I need everybody's help. I need the county's citizens' help. I need your help. I have a vision for temporary solution. If you know where Connections is, is in Hernando. They go there every day or whenever they can to get food and a shower. And also they get help in Hernando from the Family Resource Center that Ginger West was head of. I just think we could have maybe a, start the hat with a GoFundMe page. And I need somebody's help to do that and to take this money maybe to Hernando Brandon Banks and get something started, just a savings account or something. Oh, I ran out of time already.
But thank you for your wonderful heart. Thank you. Next speaker. Mr. Schwartz?
You don't have to say my name, do I now?
Did you, yes, you do. Did you bring your indoor voice? Okay, thank you.
Stephen Schwartz, Beverly Hills. Commissioners, at the last meeting, it was stated that you can't tell a person or developer what they can and cannot build on a property they own. Then why not get rid of the planning board, throw the LDC out the window and the master plans out the door? Throw the LDC out the window and the master plans out the door just to prove everything? Developers won't need to fund campaigns. But the truth is, you can deny landowners from what they can and cannot build on their land. New Dollar Generals can't stand alone. The car wash on four ninety-one by Culvers couldn't split the plot. The master plan in Pine Ridge prevented homes from being built on a golf course. You prevent building higher than three stories and other precedent-setting instances that are posed a problem. Just look at the problems from Metalcrest and Ivy Four, approving without using sensible thinking. No, you can't stop growth, and I stated that to this board on more than one occasion. But you can manage it in a sensible way when you apply common sense. You can put a moratorium on new projects so you can assess the number of empty lots already approved and the effects on our infrastructure. Then you can determine the number of houses that are already built and empty, like the one down the street from me that was completed about six months ago. As I said last meeting, developers' dream is build it and they will come. A homeless person's squatter, criminal's dream is a place to stay until court. If you, if there are enough available buildings for commercial and livings, then yes, you can deny an application or tell the developer now is not the time until seventy-five percent is occupied. This would not include vacant buildings and plazas. They would get approval to demolish, rebuilding, and this would prevent criminal activity considering the shortage of deputies. The only other approval would be for attainable housing that is built in like and similar neighborhoods. Or with the permission of the majority of those affected at a town hall meeting, kind of like a ma- ma- mediation ahead of approval or denial in front of the board. By doing this, you would slow down the growth rate, at the same time, build out everything that has been approved to this point with a seventy-five percent occupancy. It is als- it also gives the animal kingdom an opportunity to migrate elsewhere as they lose their habitat. Beware the more intense and direct storms in the future. If you pour too much concrete and add lighting in areas where none exists.
Thank you.
Janet Barrick, Citrus Springs resident. In Citrus Springs, there's a lot of growth going on, a lot of houses being built. One of the biggest problems that is happening is the building department doesn't have enough people to do what they need to do, to stay on top of the growth and the building and the deforestation. You know, the clearcutting, where the builder comes in and clearcuts and leaves a pile in the right of way for a year with no one sign up that says this is a building permit. Okay, we've got lots of those in Citrus Springs. I have a house going down the, in, down the street from me. And the people started to do stuff, and I started making calls to the building department due to the fact that I know part of the order in which you're supposed to do things. And things were being done without signage, without a porta potty, without a garbage facility, without anything for regard for our rules and regulations. What we really need to think about is putting a moratorium on new single-family houses being built for, say, sixty or ninety days to give our building department an opportunity to try to catch up with what's going on. Okay, we have enough builders that, you know, sixty or ninety days that they have to wait before they can start getting their permits is not the end of the world. But it's something that the county can do. I know that the water department is having a hard time keeping up with getting the water lines in. It might give them an opportunity also. We do not have enough workers in the building department. We are working at, like you said, two thousand and seven employee levels. We are in two thousand and twenty-four. I don't like to spend any money that doesn't need to be spent. But we really do need to add a few employees to either the building department or the water department or both. They are essential to the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Um, hi. I'm Charlotte Opal from Citrus Springs. Um, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Charlotte Opal. As a sophomore at Alicanto High School, Go Panthers, and a youth leader for the Tobacco-Free Partnership of Citrus County, I am deeply invested in the well-being of our community. As alarming statistics from the World Health Organization reveal eight million lives are lost annually due to, due to tobacco use. Unfortunately, Citrus County mirrors this global trend, with one in five adults and one in five youth currently engaging in tobacco consumption. Being a student at Alicanto High School, I witnessed the impact of this crisis firsthand. That is why the work of the Tobacco-Free Partnership of Citrus County is so important. Our coalition comprised of organizations such as the Hanley Foundation, Eckerd Connects, and the Anti-Drug Coalition is dedicated to the collaborative efforts aimed at reducing tobacco use and its consequences. Our current initiatives focus on increasing community awareness of the harmful marketing strategies employed by Big Tobacco and advocating for poli- policies that promote smoke-free environments in public parks and beaches. If you're interested in supporting our cause or learning more about our efforts, please visit our website at tobaccofreecitrus.com or consider, consider attending our next meeting on April twenty-third at eleven a.m. Thank you for your attention and consideration. Together, we can work towards a healthier Tobacco-Free Citrus County.
Thank you. If you want to stick around, I'm sure we're going to have remarks. Because I, I'm going to start my remarks with Go Pirates. Okay, is there anyone else for open to the public? Seeing none? And I don't see anybody popping up on my screen. Commissioners, anyone?
Comments?
Commissioner Bays?
As far as stopping permits, Janet, go tell that to a builder, and he will go ballistic on you. And I'll tell you why. It's a money. If you are a builder and you're building homes and you're employing people, if you set them off for sixty, ninety days and they don't have a paycheck, they're not coming back to work for you. That'd be like telling a restaurant to close down for sixty or ninety days. These builders, what they've done in the meantime, even when we were having problems internally, they're still paying their people to keep them on the payroll so they have somebody to go back to work for them. So that, that scenario doesn't work. So I wanted to address that, number one. I have no idea where the updates are as far as, um, Mr. Howard with the grants and the AG on Ivy Four. And as far as these developments, when, when we talk about what's coming in, especially commercial, um, I would encourage you to do some homework on your governor. Because he has actually found in favor of large-scale developers over local commissions. So you can look it up, you can go read about it in the newspapers across the state, but he does override county commissions when they try to preempt development on commercial property the way it's been zoned. He has found in favor of large-scale developments. So when we, when statements are made about we can't hold certain things up, we might hold it up, but if that developer wants to then take it to the governor, he has every right to overrule us. And it doesn't look good on a county to do that. So those are my comments.
Commissioner Kennard.
Yes, I'll go ahead and chime in on some of this stuff. Uh, the Ivy Four questions keep coming, but we're not getting answers. And so I can't come, I can't blame these folks for getting more and more frustrated each meeting. What I, what I think would be a good idea is we have our list of, ongoing commissioner items that need to be addressed. I would like to see those questions added to that list. And then, rather than just moving right through and, and, I don't want to say, uh, I'm not going to say that. Uh, rather than just passing along the outstanding commission items list, I'd like to see us actually address it. What, what's happening here? What's happening here? What, what progress are we making? Because in, in their eyes, if they're not getting any, any feedback, there is no progress on the, on the Septic to Sewer grant. Is there even a Septic to Sewer grant out there that would do this? And if there's not, if, um, if there's no hope for that grant, then we need to be able to tell them that too. But right now, it's just, it's questions that, that don't seem to be getting addressed. So I would like to see those get on there. Let's see. And Janet, not to, um, not to pick on Janet, but you can't, you can't put, you can't put a moratorium on building single-family homes when you've got the Fed, uh, the Fed Chair, Jerome Powell, last week said that, uh, made a comment that even once interest rates come down, we're still going to have a housing shortage crisis. That's why these rents are so absolutely obscene, not just in our community, every community. Uh, I've got, I've got two, uh, two grown children that could not afford to live here because of the rents that, that housing is bringing right now. And, um, you know, for people that own private property and, um, you tell them you're going to put a moratorium on it and they can't build a house for, uh, two months, three months, whatever it might be, I, I have no doubt they would fill this room to capacity, as would, as would the builders. Tobacco-free Citrus County, I like the idea. And thank you to the young folks for bringing that to, uh, to our attention and taking the, the initiative.
Go ahead.
I feel like you were waiting to go left, so I didn't want to overstep. Uh, yes, the, the young lady from Alicanto, thank you for, that was very brave to come forward and let us know that. Um, I actually was one of the first board members of the Anti-Drug Coalition, and I'm so glad you're a part of that. They are doing amazing things. They have grown a lot over the years, engaging our youth, Teen Town Hall and some other great things that they're doing. So I'm so proud of all their accomplishments. I think the guy left about, talking about Veterans and Drug Addicts for Homeless. Um, another place near and dear to my heart, the Sanctuary Mission in Homasasa, is not only a homeless shelter, but helping people over all addictions, drug and otherwise. And they have such a wonderful, successful program that involves love and work and, um, a staged plan to get people recovered and back out in the community. So I invite everyone to, to look up the Sanctuary Mission. They're doing great things. We have other good homeless shelters too. We have a Domestic Violence Center here in Casa, The Path of Beverly Hills. So there are people out there doing the work. Uh, the Citrus County Veterans Foundation is helping veterans, homeless and otherwise, with things like utilities, uh, rent, repairs to homes to make sure that veterans don't become homeless. I think the other things have already been tackled by others, so I won't thank it. But thank you for your comments, uh, for those that came from the community.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlebel.
Thank you. Go Panthers. Great school.
I'm sorry. Go Pirates.
Gave, uh, my daughters a great education. And graduates, twenty eighteen, thank you very much. Tobacco-free Citrus County, it would be a great thing. And, uh, think of the money that people would save not buying those packs of cigarettes. I think everybody covered everything very well, except the resolution. Nobody seemed to touch that. I did read the resolution. I haven't had a chance to go through it again, so I can't really speak on it. I will give it another read. Inverness Village Four, I, you all touched on that, but I, I, I can't say it enough, I feel for these people. I feel how they have been duped, this situation. I would like to know where it is with the Attorney General or the FDLE. And I, I think that you, I mentioned this last week, and staff told me that there is, um, repetitive questions that are on the website. Um, I haven't gone to look at that, but I will go and look at that because I know there's been four important questions asked today. Want to make sure they're on the website. And I think it should go on the commissioner list. I mean, I can't even imagine how sick and tired they are of coming here and doing the same thing. But if somebody can't get out, I went there with the fire chief and I was assured that we, they could, emergency vehicles could go in there. So, um, let's, let's get these questions answered. So I, I went there before May, before I was diagnosed. I went there again. I go by there, my niece lives right across the street. I go by there a lot. And so, um, so my niece is right there in Independence. So, um, I'm there. It's not my district, but I'm there. So let's get some of these questions answered. Can you get me some of these answers?
We'll incorporate that into the, as requested.
Definitely. Um, is on the FAQs, do we have one about the, um, all permits being stopped and the, the, on advice of legal counsel, that we can't carve it out to new home permits, but it has to be all permits?
We'll, we'll go back and review that and make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll look at all that and talk with county attorney.
So on a, on a lighter note, Go Panthers. Um, Go Pirates, really. I'm a graduate of Pirates. I love what you're doing there. Uh, coincidentally, we did, um, colon cancer proclamation this morning. And the second most common cancer after lung cancer for smokers is colorectal cancer. So it, it's ugly on two ends of the torso. If you, um, the, the chances are not good, so I applaud your efforts, um, especially as a young person doing that. That's wonderful, the civic duty that you're showing. Clearly, I've been very sick since early February. I'm not contagious, or I wouldn't be here. Starting to feel better, but, um, I am unbearing from an enormous amount of email, some phone calls I need to return and so forth, so I'm working my way through that. Inverness Village is four. And one of, some of the things I need to do is call up to Tallahassee and see where we are with that. Remember that the file was only forwarded to FDLE in January, and it is now March. They said the investigation would take months. So the calls I'm going to make are, are to see where that is in the process and try to, um, apply some political leverage power to putting some more horsepower behind that. But there are no updates on that, that's why. If, and we'll see if I can get you something better on that. Uh, homeless. Homeless is definitely an issue that is rising in everywhere in Inverness County. It's one that I've talked about quite a bit through my work with Prosperity Citrus and Chamber Commerce and so forth. It's, uh, working on generational poverty. We have a new, a new burgeoning amount of homelessness because of the crazy rent, uh, prices in Citrus County right now and everywhere. So we do need to have some sort of answer to that, and it is on our radar. And that's it, I believe.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Please forgive me. I see Mr. Gunther, and I forgot to address him. And I do apologize if you-
Of course, go ahead.
I know, because two of us sit on the Value Adjustment Board. And by the time that comes to us, and I made that very clear, we're only procedural. So, you know, there's these check boxes of what they have to check to make their decision. And the special magistrate, the attorney, made sure all they were checked. Then we have a separate attorney that makes sure they're all, uh, checked. And, um, it didn't seem to be, when you made a very nice presentation, that pointed out any of those boxes weren't checked correctly. So I believe that you do have instructions on where to take that next. Unfortunately, that wasn't the hearing where we could just turn it over and say, okay, we, we agree with you, because even statutorily, we're not allowed to do that. So I do understand where you're coming from. I know- you're coming from. I know that you were frustrated when you left, but, um, I just encourage you to just, you know, take the next steps that you feel like you need to take. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for remembering. I, I actually meant to address that because I'm no longer on value adjustment board and I wanted to ask you, um, what the situation was there. So thanks for remembering. All right. Um, if there's nothing further, we'll move on to E regular business.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve E1A through E1H.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on E1?
Fences for meta technologies. Um, isn't that an enterprise that we have? And I understand $70,000 for eight of these fences is a decent price, but isn't the garbage dumps and whatever an enterprise function? Otherwise, where is the 70,000 coming from?
It's enterprise.
Yep. And I, I, my eyes shot to the reef because I bought enough horse fencing over the years. I'm like, how in the world is it that expensive? And if you actually read the whole contract, I can see why it's, uh, so expensive. Okay. Um, board, E2? Or we, I need to call the vote. Sorry.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Um, it, it was a cost of $58,690. Is that what was said for E, E1B that was just brought up? I thought I heard 70,000. Okay. Just wanted that.
Do you want the answer on?
No, I'm reading it. It's, for the record, it's 58,690.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E2.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You need one more vote.
We need one more vote. Up there. Come on. Who hasn't voted?
My mind's not coming up.
Redo. I just cleared everybody and said redo, so. All righty, good to go. All right. E2?
Motion to approve E2.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on E2? Seeing none. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Like I said, she's also learning it in the back and, um, the pacing is, we, we may abandon this. We're testing it today. We'll see. E3?
Madam Chairman, move to approve E3.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schlebal, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on D3, E3? Seeing none. Uh, board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E4, A, B, and C.
Motion to approve E4, A, B, and C.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any public comment on E4? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E5?
Motion to approve E5.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on E5? Seeing none. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It's fun, right? E6, A and B.
Motion to approve E6, A and B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Any board discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, this, uh, was broken down the first time and I was not at the meeting to do this vote. I had to leave for treatment, but the 156,000 is coming out of District A's road impact fees and then 37,255 from park impact fees, District One, and then the, um, 56437 out of road impact fees in Crystal River. Originally though, the 156,000 dollars was coming from the pooled impact fees. Was that moved around from the first time?
Yeah, the hearing.
I think that is District A, right?
Sure.
District A is all of them? Is that what it is?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so it wasn't moved from that. So, um, so it's coming out of every, every district's, um, the pooled amount.
The pooled amount.
Okay, and the District One road impact, oh, so this is road impact fees. And then the, okay. Not, wasn't it under the original, under park impact fees pooled, not road impact fees?
So, we had given, um, potential suggestions because the impact fee consultant said it could come from road or park impact fees. But then when the item was discussed, it was determined that they would, we would use the road impact fees specifically for Crystal River first. Then we would use what was left and park impact fees for, um, District One, which is just, it, it's the one we don't collect anymore.
Right.
Now they all go into one pool. And then the remainder would be from the transportation or the road impact fees, um, from District One.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up for me.
Thank you. Um, anything further?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E7?
Which was pooled.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks for keeping me on track, Steve. All right, F?
Uh, just a few items here. Um, the RFQ for the pavement management engineering services is completed. It's with the Office of Management and Budget to advertise, which is good news. I got some good news late yesterday also, that the countywide resurfacing and preservation bid documents have been delivered to purchasing. They're going to begin now drafting the solicitation documents to, to get those out, which is good news. Uh, the Betts Farm update on 2024, the Board of Commissioners approved the due diligence period and closing date extension to 4/29/24, uh, but negotiations are ongoing, uh, with the attorneys on the rest of the addendum. That's all I've got for an update.
Thank you. All right, you roll right into G1?
Yes, I am back. Uh, we, during the FY24 budget, um, we had talked about, uh, giving me a cap to $200,000, uh, for communications, uh, the needs for that. I'm not asking for the 200 tonight. I'm asking for what's budgeted currently. Uh, there's two positions and actually working with our new, uh, PIO officer, uh, digital media coordinator, uh, according to Pew Research, five point, uh, almost 5.2 billion people spend an average two and a half hours a day on social media. Um, and 85% of US adults say that sometime or often they get their news from digital service. Um, so this is an area that we really have to do, I think, a better job at. Uh, we also did in the past 30 days, uh, the launch of Citrus County in Focus. I compliment staff for the good work they're doing there. We had a 39% increase in Facebook overall reach, 88% increase in link clicks. Um, also the YouTube channel over 1,000 views compared to about 150 views with what we're doing here today. Um, it'll be effective transparency, single, uh, source of truth, and also we're going to compel fresh curated content and also the voice of the county. Uh, so strongly recommend that position be approved tonight. Also, the intergovernmental affairs manager, actually last night I got a call from an intergovernmental affairs manager from Duke, actually wanting to ask about a subject. So all the best practices, uh, these kind of positions that they have in other governments, uh, we have, there's over 42 state agencies that we interact with across Florida, over 438 federal government branches, uh, 119 nonprofits alone, just in this county alone, we interact with. Also, there's other entities that also have this position. And also it'll maximize grant legislative allocation opportunities. And that's really what's really important with this position. I think we're leaving a lot of money on the table that we're not going after and we need their resources to do that. Also, it's going to track legislation, uh, and also the impact on the county every year. But this is really 12 months a year that we're going to be focused on. And I always say sometimes you have to spend money to save money and opportunities missed or opportunities lost. I strongly recommend the board approve these two positions tonight. Um, they're not a, a want they're a need. Um, so I ask your recommendation is to move forward on these positions and I need your support to do just that.
Board?
Motion approved, G2.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Baze. Is there any public comment?
G1, I'm sorry.
G1, G1, yes?
Yes.
Can you make sure your mic is on? Up there is now.
Is it on now?
Yep.
Okay. Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs resident. I looked at these two positions and all of the different things that were needed for these people. And then I looked at the price that we want to pay them for salary. You got $100,000 that you're going to move from whatever to pay for this supposedly. Why don't you pay them 47.5 each like we do beginning teachers and see how they make out? These are positions that at 47.5, they should be able to do their job. And if they do a good job, you move them up. And then you don't go above the 100,000 that's already been set aside. We need to cut spending. These positions, if they're that necessary, they should be able to prove for 47.5 that they can do it, not for the prices that are advertised here. And, yeah, you can get people to work for $47,500. You don't have to go out and spend 70 and 80,000 for an employee. These are not something that, that's very, very technical. Okay? We already have somebody that goes up to Tallahassee that's supposed to be representing us. Now we're going to hire somebody that's going to talk to that representative, to talk to another representative? Okay? To me, that's double work. But if we feel that these are needed, fine. But I feel that 47,500 is more than enough to pay for a starting position.
Is there anyone else to speak from open to, or on this item? G1? Seeing none. Any board discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I do want to say for the, the legislative position for what it is, I mean, I just, I do have to go on record saying it is quite high. Um, there's no educational component needed. If we're looking at someone that's currently serving as a legislative aide, this would be a very huge bump for them or even a grant writer. That, that is a huge bump. Um, I was hoping that our PIO could handle some of the communication stuff. I know Veronica, um, handled, being the PIO, handled the internet stuff and was balancing projects for some time. So, um, I want Veronica to know that I, I recognize that and thank you for all your hard work. I feel like I'm going to be outnumbered. Um, I don't know that I'm not going to vote for it. I just, I, I heard everybody say, no, raise a millage. So when I heard that, it started making me think of the positions going, we're, don't want to raise the millage, but we're adding. So we'll just have to, I think when we talked about it, I said, look for a way to pay for it without raising the budget and, uh, you'd have my support. So if we're not going to raise the budget, I'll vote yes, but.
Yeah, I think you're going to save money. That's, I mean, these, these kind of positions, uh, save you lots of money. It's a certain skill set and Veronica did an amazing job, but we're doing things differently that she didn't do before. Um, and it's almost like I call it CNN, but not the CNN that you know. It's Citrus News Network, um, where we're out there in the public doing some things because you have to have the resources to do that, to tell our story. And we haven't been very effective at that. And it's nobody's fault. It's because we didn't have the people to do it. And now we're doing that. When you're seeing 5,000 views and you're seeing these great stories, Habitat for Humanity, we launched a video on, uh, Friday to show all the good work that's happening. We got to tell that story. And that actually saves you money because you're communicating to the public. We're letting them behind the curtain. So these are critically, these are best practices. You're going to find them in every county, almost in this whole state. And if you don't do that, you're going to be behind, just like in the past, I think you've been behind. Um, so these are proactive approaches that you got to do it. And like I said, sometimes you got to spend money to save money. And I'm convinced that they'll save four times their salary. Um, if you get the right person with all the grant opportunities out there, there's no guarantees in anything. If I had a crystal ball, I'd have, I wouldn't be working here. I'd be doing some other things. Uh, but I, but I think it's, I would be doing that. Uh, but I think it's, uh, you, you got to do things differently to get different results. And I can tell you, that's what we're getting is different results, proactively, uh, doing things differently. And there's a price tag for it and it's an investment. And I get that. I wish I could come here and not spend money. I like doing that. I got a track record of that. Sometimes you got to spend money to make money. Um, and now we're saving money. We're not, we're spending money, but actually I think your ROI is going to be big. And you're also going to have to look at all these staffers. They're the ones that control sometimes that purring at the legislative offices. That's importantly critical. And I do this all the time, weekly. I've done with a lot of these agencies. Now we have somebody proactively actually doing it and also getting our story out. There's going to be a lot more coming in 2024 to tell the story. We've got to tell it. We've got a good story to tell, uh, but we got to have people to do it. Just like in other department, you know, we talked about, you have 44 less positions in 2007. You got 20,000 more people. We're going digital. Actually, the Chronicle, they're here tonight and they're here over there. They're going digital. Actually, they're today. That, there's a reason why you're beginning to see these trends. And unfortunately, we can't be on Nextdoor, Facebook and all these things. You got to have people doing it. And they're working around the clock. Staff did before and I compliment them, but we got to have people to get this story out. So I stand by my decision.
Um, Commissioner Kennard, I think you were next.
No.
No. Commissioner Schlebal?
I, I just want to say that, um, I actually talked to a 25-year-old graduate, uh, uh, degree in, um, marketing. And I said, I think, you know, it's, the start's at 49,000. And I, I got laughed at and said, I'm making 65,000 right out of the gate. So, I mean, hopefully you can pick somebody up for 49,000, but, um, good luck.
I'd love, actually, one thing I want to push, you know, maybe is an interim program with this county. You don't have one really effectively. Those are opportunities. So we grow our own. Um, I'd love to tap all the colleges, uh, to be able to do that. I was very close to a former organization in the last job that we did that. And a lot of those folks actually come to work for us. Um, that's a program I'd love to institute and that's some of that talent. But you're right, these folks are making a lot of money in other places. We got to convince them why they should come here, but I think we have a good story to tell. It's a great opportunity for the right, right fit.
I concur with you that it, this will end up actually returning money to the budget in the form of, and I'm looking at you, Ken Cheek. I asked you one time how many emails you had to reply on for septic to sewer and if we were, how many staff hours it takes to continually talk about the same subject over and over again. And last I checked, you're not a communications professional, although you do darn good email, I will say that. But it's not his strongest suit. And if you get organized and practice not only transparency, but effective transparency through communication skills, it's going to make our current staff a lot more effective and time efficient because they won't be answering questions over and over again. So, um, speaking as someone in, from that arena, I completely concur with him. It's actually going to return money to the budget for what it's worth.
Well, mine was more the intergovernmental. So, you know, because we have a balance between, uh, taxpayers' money.
Sure.
And we don't want to handcuff our administrator because you see this vision to hopefully, like you said, a track record to save them money.
Yes.
So I think they need to hear that. Um, would you say if we all vote for this today and eventually it takes your time to hire and then we'll have a whole nother budget cycle, by the time we talk about the budget cycle after that, if that position is not in essence giving the benefit paying for itself for taxpayers, are you willing to get rid of that position?
I think you have, you look at, you have to look at all the ROIs, but I'm always open to, to looking at those things. I, I'm convinced that, uh, with staff time alone, a good example, I was with actually Commissioner Baze at an event last week with Tampa General Hospital. And who sat across me was an intergovernmental relations manager with the CEO, but he was directing that person to do all these things. Actually, that person was doing the legislative stuff along with their retained lobbyists. Um, so there's a value for that, but you can't sometimes put a monetary value on it. But the staff time alone, I can tell you, Heron has worked hours and hours during this legislative session in concert with our lobbyists, but also there's things that we need to do in real time. Sometimes you can't put a price on it, but there's dollars associated with that. So I'm open to looking at everything, but I'm convinced it does add value. At the end of the day, sometimes it's just not dollar bills, but it's other things. Um, so I think, uh, I'm convinced if we get the right talent, and maybe it's going to be hard to recruit. Um, but if we get the right talent, I'm, I'm convinced that at the end of the day, you'll see an ROI. That one connection they have for a grant changes everything. Other places I've been, I can tell you, we generated over 100 million dollars over a 10-year period. That's a lot of money, but it's because of those contacts, those relationships with staffers and other things. And I think we have an opportunity to do that. So I think, um, I'm convinced that you'll find a lot of value in this position if we get the right fit.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. There's nothing further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for your support.
Motion carries unanimously. And I, I got rid of the poll because I couldn't see who wanted to talk in the order. So, that note was. So that note was for Kat. Okay, now where are we? I. I won. Anybody like to, I know who I want. If no one else knows, I'll jump out, but typically I let you guys go. Anybody like to make a nomination?
Don't they both have to get their nomination?
One is for regular member, one's for alternate. So I would make a motion for Marilyn Kraus as the regular member and Mark Headquist as the alternate.
I'll second that. The only question I have is Marilyn's lived here one year and Marcus lived here seven year. That's always something I look at.
That, that is something that I look at as well, and that's my one concern. And I'm, I'm fine with pulling that nomination if y'all feel differently. But in speaking with the chair of that board, he specifically said education was a big criteria for him. So I'm going with the chair of that board's desires. But I, being sick and rough with my voice, I did not interview either one of them personally, so I don't know them personally. So.
Madam Chair, I did second your nomination. I was just pointing out that.
Yeah, I'm just letting you know why I, you know, why I went the way I did. So is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, committee reports. Commissioner Kennard?
Nothing.
Commissioner Finnegan?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Baze?
No.
Commissioner Schleba?
Nothing.
All right, and I have nothing either.
Didn't have any meetings this last two weeks.
I was really glad I didn't because I would have had to miss them. All right, Kay, Commissioner Schleba, anything?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kennard?
Yes, I've actually got two things I want to talk about. One of them is the item that I was going to add to the agenda today or ask that we add to the agenda. And that's the, that's the MOU with the City of Inverness for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the TDC expressed favor in giving to them for promotion of their, of their events. That meeting was on, and this is not a criticism, but I'm just trying to move things along a little bit. That meeting was on February fourteenth that the TDC approved that. It was not on our agenda, the last meeting. It was not on our agenda this meeting. So I don't know how many discussions there have been between the county and the two cities on an MOU. I suspect that this is not going to be the last ask for something like this. That the City of Inverness may very well come back to the TDC on an annual basis. Or the City of Crystal River may go to the, the TDC for similar funding for their promotions. But I would like to see us get a, an MOU that is both satisfactory to the county and to the cities. Thankfully, the cities both use the same attorney, so the conversation shouldn't be too difficult. But I would like to see us get an MOU that is satisfactory to both parties or all three parties and get it back on our agenda for the next meeting. This is a hundred and fifty thousand. I don't want to say this wrong. A hundred and fifty thousand is a lot of money. In the grand scheme of things, it's not a lot of money. The TDC has approved this. It should be, this should be almost boilerplate stuff for us at this point. I know there's, or at least I suspect there's some concern about, well, what if the cities use it wrong? What if the cities don't do with it what they tell us they're gonna do with it? That would be very extraordinarily foolish on their part because then next year when they come and ask, they get nothing. So I, I suspect that the cities will use this for their promotions. Both cities have a lot of stuff going on. So I'd like, I don't, I don't think that it's too much to ask for our attorney to get the city's attorney, get an MOU worked out and get it back on the agenda. The MOU that, that was, that was sent over is one that I think, I'm not positive. I think was between Ocala and Marion County, just from their attorney. I mean, this is not stuff that was, that was written in Inverness City Hall. They pulled a, pulled an MOU that was used by a nearby community to try and save some time and legal fees and so forth and get it rolling. If we disagree with parts of it, let's give our attorney direction to get on the phone with Mr. Batzel, get it ironed out and bring it back to us, rather than it being months before this board actually sees it back in front of us. You know, we had an agenda item, something that, that Commissioner Schleba mentioned today. The, the pathway between La Groene Park and Copeland Park. This board approved that back in December of last year and we're just seeing it now. That's too long. Let this, if, if we're going to approve these funds to get to the cities, let's have, let's streamline the process so it gets done. Our legal department has much more challenging stuff to work on than these little bits of money to the cities and us wrangling over, you know, a word here and there, that sort of thing on it. So anyway, I know I have nothing to vote on about it, but I would love to see this board give direction to, to our attorney to get with Mr. Batzel and get an MOU ironed out. That should not be terribly challenging and get it, get it back to us at the next meeting.
You said you had two items. Is that, because certainly I will address that as TDC chair. Did you have a second item to talk about?
Yes, I do.
Would you, do you want me to, you want to address this one first and then go to the second one?
Go ahead and address it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this goes back to sometime right after I became chair of TDC. So it must have been sometime in twenty two. And I sat down with both city managers at the time. It was Eric Williams and Ken Frank. And they made a very good argument that it's government pulling money out of other governments because of the time involved to do the contract, you know, come up, come in and bid for the grant and for very, pretty small amounts. But repeatedly, because there's multiple events. So they made a good case. I was encouraging our current VCB director at the time was not in, really in favor of it and slow walked it. And, and then everything kind of blew up last year. So the position that I have is that I believe that that's a very good route to take. I just have, back to Steve's, yes, if, okay, I have a few conditions that I want to go through. And to be clear, I was gone February fourteenth. I was out sick, so I missed the TDC meeting. So, but I did review the minutes. I will go back and watch the tape. But essentially, I'm in favor of it, but much like we do before we go to a client and say, you know, a lot of times they just give us the budget, but sometimes they say, how much should we spend? We don't go in and say, oh, it should be blah, blah, blah. We go in with a full plan. So I would like to see a plan for what they're asking for, understanding that there may be some fluidity as the year goes, year goes on with the execution of that plan and need to do little stage checks, you know, that they just let us know how things are going. And that we absolutely have to have it in writing that they're gonna follow state statute with the funds because there's some really tight, as I'm sure you're aware, very tight regulations involved in what we can spend tourist tax dollars on. I have long pushed to market the east side of the county more. And I think this would be a great thing for both cities to move forward. So you do, you know, I'm certainly in favor of it. I just didn't happen to be there. And your point is well taken on moving things along.
So what I, what I would like for is, I would like for us to give direction to the legal department. And I appreciate everything that you just said. I hope that we don't get too deep into the weeds with it. It's a hundred and fifty thousand, not a hundred and fifty million to some unknown nonprofit. I would like to see us give direction to legal to get with the, both the city's attorney and get an MOU worked out. Again, this should be relatively boilerplate stuff when dealing with another local governing body. If they, again, if they blow it, all bets are off for next year. Now they've created a mess for themselves. They're not gonna do that. They're doing great things on both sides of the county. That's, that's just not gonna happen.
Chair Finnegan, yours is on. Is everybody, everybody wants to speak for real? Then it's Commissioner Finnegan.
I gotta find light on. You gotta look at your list.
I did look at the list. It says Finnegan.
I've been on here and watching. Nobody's.
I think Commissioner Schleba's late was on when I turned my on.
Well, then this is faulty.
That's what I'm saying. Go ahead.
Hang on, hang on. Let me, let me look.
Just quickly while she's figuring out, I was just going to say yes.
It says Baze, Finnegan, Schleba on my list.
That's all I wanted to say. Yes.
So actually, I just, Baze.
Okay, just two questions. Thank you for bringing up that government is slow. May twenty twenty one, we had a vote to move forward with a new animal shelter. Still hasn't happened. So I couldn't agree with you more. It was brilliant. Your, your, your comment was brilliant. I did, I have.
You gotta have one every meeting.
I have one question though. It says the TDC looked favorably upon the request and suggested the board adopt such an agreement. Was there a vote? Only just so that I know. And I, you know, I've roughly read through this. There is a few, you know, little tweaks. But I agree with what Commissioner Kennard is saying. I just don't think February fourteenth to March twelfth is a huge thing when we're talking about May twenty twenty one. So just want to give you that. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just answer one?
I was gonna ask Mr. Howard about the vote. Yes?
It's, it's May, Jan, February fourteenth through March twelfth isn't a long time, but it still wasn't on this agenda. So then we're looking, not at March twelfth, we're looking at what, March twenty sixth at the earliest that we was in. And the conversations, I, I don't know if the conversations have started or not. And again, this isn't to point fingers. It's not criticism. Get it done and get it out of here. That's what I want to see happen.
Mr. Howard?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the document, you know, to look at what the vote, if it was a vote or not a vote. It'll have, I mean, when you get that information, I wasn't.
There was. Okay, thank you. Because I remember it was unanimous. I don't, I didn't remember if there was an official vote. Thank you, Mr. Davis, brother Davis. Commissioner Baze?
I've had the opportunity to talk with our new tourist development council director, Evans, and I am very pleased that he's on board. He seems to have a very deep breadth of knowledge about tourism. And my time as being the chair of tourism, we set policies in place for grant opportunities. And my one concern about this would be is if we have a policy in place for grants, this is essentially the same thing. And I wouldn't want to get us, get ourselves in a situation where we have preferential treatment for one entity over another entity that could cause us some heartburn. And I think he, you know, with all due respect, somebody that has the expertise in tourism, he needs to be able to get his arms around this and know how we can proceed to get to where we want to go with it. So that's, that's my two cents.
Commissioner Kennard, you have your other item? You wanna, I think we're done.
Chair, may I? I have my light on.
Oh, yes, you do.
Thank you. So I just, on this matter, I just would say that I have not had a single conversation with anybody outside of Citrus County on this agreement. So I, I, whenever this board makes new policy, whether it's by ordinance or by contract, I like to get direction from the board, this board, on how it wants to move forward. So my conversations in the beginning of January with the tourist development director at the time, which was Frank, was that, you know, for him to do his part, which was take it to the TDC, get the TDC's direction, I guess, you know, do whatever it is he does to determine how you all wanted that. I saw the TDC meeting in February that Commissioner Kennard referenced. I watched it on video, which is where I saw Mr. Williams make the statement that it had been illegal, which would be me, my office, for months waiting for, with no commentary back from my office. And I communicated with Frank and let him know that he needed to explain to Mr. Williams how we did things on, in the county, which was present it to the board, get board direction. And then I would take your direction and draft some kind of an agreement. Because still, even what you all have said here, I still don't know what you all want in that agreement in terms of, some things I've heard from you is Commissioner Davis said she wants some kind of stage checks. She wants to make sure that they follow state statute and that she wants to see a plan. I've heard those three things. And I've heard that they may blow it. And if they blow it, then they won't get money the next year. But I need to know from you, what types of provisions do, because there are none. There are no provisions right now about providing a plan in the draft. There is nothing about providing checks. There's nothing about following state statute and there's nothing about if they blow it, to use words that were used previously. So if you all want me to draft this and get with Mr. Batzel, what do you want me to negotiate on your behalf? Do you want me to have something in there that says, if they blow it, what, what's the recourse? What do we do if we find out that if we?
Madam Chair, we have gotten to the point of ridiculousness. You don't put that stuff in a contract. You know that as well as I do. So if we need to, maybe we need to look at having Mr. Batzel draft it and bring it back to us. This is not that challenging. Let's not find a million ways to say no.
Mr. Batzel has drafted a contract. If you all are comfortable with that contract, then you all can sign that one.
Commissioner Baze?
I would like to hear from our new tourist development director and have some input from him as to how this would be handled under what he knows.
I did have discussions this morning with the city manager of Inverness and, and encouraged them to actually get together. It'd be an opportunity for a meet and greet and also find, you know, ways to work together and other things too. So they are gonna be scheduling a meeting soon. So, so you're aware of that.
I'm hearing that I'm supposed to bring something back to you.
Is it not, to Commissioner Kennard's point, is it not simple enough to put a line in there that says that they agree to follow state statute and how they expend the funds?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, as far as some sort of plan or updates, that can be an agree, outside the contracted agreement. It could be the responsibility of the two cities each have a representative on our board. So I would ask that prior to us officially anointing that amount, that they would give some sort of presentation at TDC, even informally. And I'm just asking this outside the contract, but in, in, under the guise of let's all work together and streamline this and make it efficient, that please give us some sort of idea on what they're gonna be doing with the money. And then we meet every month. They give normal updates. It's very easy for Councilwoman Hefner to say, we did this, we did this, we did this, we did this in the last month, or we've had no action this month, but we've got this, this, this and this next month. That happens routinely anyway, and that's all I'm talking about. But the main thing is, is that I don't want the funds not spent to state statute. And all we need is just a line to cover the county that says they're going to expend the funds according to state statute on what's legal and not legal.
Okay, so I wrote down the three things you said because I wanted to make sure they were in the contract because it sounded to me like that's what you wanted.
Well, I'm, I'm clarifying.
And if I didn't ask, then I wouldn't know how to proceed.
I understand, I understand. I'm just letting you know, I'm clarifying that that's what I meant and I appreciate you asking that question. Are we good now?
I got a question.
Okay.
So Commissioner Kennard, it sounds like you've had a lot more discussion on this. And typically, what happens with dollars that you're investing is to, to have a return on investment. It's a head in a bed. So as long as they've been doing these festivals and events in Inverness, have they demonstrated or provided you any information that shows the return on the investment of, I mean, if they're spending a hundred and fifty thousand now or whatever amount of money that they're spending, have they provided you anything that says? have they provided you anything that says, this would be a really great way for a grant, um, for us to be reimbursed? We can demonstrate the amount of money that we're spending right now out of this, that we're getting these heads and beds, and, and we're getting a return on our investment and getting visitors from outside of our county. It's not just a, a festival or, or an event for local residents.
That's the job of the TDC. The TDC hears all that information. They hear the sales pitch, they hear what the budget is, they hear everything behind it, and then they make a recommendation. There's no reason for us, and no, I haven't, there's no reason for us to revisit the TDC's work. If we're going to trust the, the horsepower that's on that committee to listen to these pitches from both the cities, whoever else may come and make a pitch to them, and then they vote unanimously to give this money to them, the TDC obviously believes that this is a worthwhile cause to send it to. They send it to us. We see, yes, they voted for it unanimously. Is it legal? How do we make this legal to get them the money? Get them the money based on their recommendations. We can get as deep in the weeds in this stuff as we want to. We can live in the weeds. There's no reason to. The TDC's already heard all that stuff. So that would be, that would be my answer. No, I, I'm, I'm not getting involved in revisiting all of that.
Commissioner Schleber?
Um, I've just gone through this inter-local agreement just a couple times. And I want to make sure that the county is in charge of this, because the TDC is dispersing the money. I, I don't have a problem with a hundred and fifty thousand. Let's move on. Let's make government more efficient. But if, there's just a couple little things that I would like to speak to the attorney about and say, listen, um, and she might, you might very well say, hey, this, that's normal verbiage that goes into the contract. But this, the, the terms are three years. But I thought we had just said, listen, let's try it for this first year. Let's see how it goes. But the terms in this, this contract say three years, and then with an additional year renewal after that three. So I think there are a few little bugs that, that the, the county attorney has to look at. No offense to, um, Mr. Batzel, but he works for the city of Inverness, not for the county. So, um, I don't have a problem with it, but let's just get the bugs out and let's just, you know, well, okay, we wanna move on, but let's do it right. Let's not be such a rush. The, they're not even gonna get the money till December of twenty twenty four.
They're planning now. They don't get the money till then, but they're planning now. We're, we're talking earlier about wanting to plan for the next five years and wanting to see budgets from, uh, you know, from our constitutionals in thirty days for what, what they're, you know, they're not planning on bringing those budgets till early summer. Uh, we're gonna be asking them to bring those budgets forward in thirty days, possibly give us an idea of what they wanna do in five years. So the, both of those cities, I'm sure, or at this point, it's the city of Inverness, they're planning. Then they need to know is this money definitely coming? Is this money not coming? Um, those are things that they, that they will depend on when they go through the planning process. I'm fine with their, you know, the bugs are in there, get them worked out. There's nothing major there. There needs, uh, I didn't watch the TDC meeting, but I would suggest, you know, watch, you know, Ms. Lynn said she watched it. What was the agreement? Was the agreement one year or three years? Whatever the TDC, uh, agreed to at that point, then I don't have an issue with it. Um, you know, again, if they're following state statute, uh, if they, if they spend it in a way that's inconsistent with state statute, they've created a problem for themselves. I don't suspect they will do that. And yes, the contract should protect us in that, in that event. So I think there are bugs, but this isn't something that should be, um, months in getting in front of us to pass.
Are you done? Madam Chairman?
Yes.
So you're gonna get these bugs out? You're gonna put it on the next agenda?
Not me. I'm legal.
Okay, it's under you right now. So, okay.
Or, I mean, I, I would put it back under, under my name on the agenda, but this is something for the, for the attorneys to
Okay.
to walk through it and say, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. All right.
It can either go under Mr. Howard's or mine as Chair, TDC Chair, or yours. I don't really care.
Then they gain difference to me.
Usually contracts are put on the agenda by the department or the division that administers the contract.
That's fine. Perfect.
So that's why it would generally be put on the agenda by the TD, whoever, you know, I understand that we had some changeover. I haven't even met the new TDC director myself. Um, we emailed yesterday for the first time, so, um, but that's generally whatever division or department is in charge of a contract, that's the division or department that puts it on the, on the agenda. But I'm e- and now am I to understand that we're gonna wait for somebody to go to TDC to give the plan? Or, or are we gonna wait for this, for our, our new director to meet with the city manager at the city of Inverness that the, the administrator just said? Or am I just gonna call Rob Batzel tomorrow? I, I'm not, I've gotten a couple different things.
I would say get the agreement going, and I have TDC tomorrow. So I can handle a lot of this tomorrow because I will be going to TDC tomorrow. But get the agreement going so we can, you know, nothing that we've asked you to add, which is essentially the state statute portion, and whether it's a one to three year, we can figure that out and move forward.
Right. It currently says three years with automatic one-year renewals.
Yeah. And if that's what the minutes or the video states from TDC, then to Commissioner Kennard's point, we do what TDC said.
Yeah, the TDC didn't discuss the agreement at all.
Okay. They didn't say three years?
They, they didn't. They didn't discuss it because they didn't have the agreement. Well, I, I understand some of them may have, um, gotten a prelude of it before the meeting, but it was generally a, a policy direction that, you know, are, are we in favor of this? It, Inverness made a, a great presentation about the things they were doing, so.
So how about we, this is not a voting item anyway. How about we have a consensus that we will discuss it tomorrow at TDC, whether it's one or three years? And then we'll get back to you on that. But state statute is a hard no for me. Like, that has to be in the contract. They're gonna follow state statute. Is that good enough?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, let's see, who's next? Good grief. This, I'm not sure this list is correct.
Oh.
Because it, it just popped Schleber up to the top, and I think you just clicked it.
I know, that's what I told you the first time.
But it puts you to the top of the list, and both of them, I'm.
I, you are right about us being in the weeds.
I, can we just have peanut M and M's up here and you guys can just throw them at me when you wanna be heard?
That sounds good.
Ah, anyway, sorry, I'm about on my last quarter.
I, so I don't think that three years is a big deal. I don't foresee the city of Inverness doing something they're not. I do think we should be protected, because that's just what we should do about state statute. Three years isn't a big deal to me because you ask a penalty, just what you had said. Uh, if they don't follow state statute, they forfeit all future TDC funds. So if it's a three-year contract and the first year, which I'm sure that they won't, they don't spend it the way they're supposed to, the contract's over. The second year, they're just not gonna get the money because it just, it seems simple. I, I feel like it could be simple.
So I would put a non-appropriations clause in there, which is not in there, and I would also put in a clause that says, uh, uh, termination for convenience, which would protect both of you, and neither of those two things are in that contract.
Excellent.
See how simple?
Sometimes I don't wanna be accused of being a sixth commissioner and inserting my own thoughts into your business, so that's why I wait for direction from you.
All right, and I think Commissioner Kennard had a second item.
I do. This one's a lot more fun.
Oh, Lord.
The, um, I told the board in the past that I missed.
Um, you need your mic on. There you go.
Wow, just like that. This, this group meeting about, um, scallops down Home Sasa had asked me to come down and meet with them. And, um, so I did. And, um, I told you about, uh, uh, speaking with this gentleman Kurt, uh, that runs, uh, the hatchery down in, um, I think it's Fort Myers area, somewhere's in Sarasota, maybe. Anyway, the, the plan that is, that is beginning to develop is, um, uh, that not only would they do these, these eight, um, eight releases of larvae from the hatchery each year, but it would be a most multifaceted approach. I wrote, I wrote a guest column in the paper about it. I don't know if anybody read it or not, but um, the second facet to that would be these measuring devices that UF distributed for free last year. Has a small hole in the center of it. If the scallop goes through it, probably need to turn, turn it loose, put it back in the water for next year. The third portion of this would be a big portion of scallops, large number of scallops that are captured already each year in the early summer months, uh, would be taken and left to grow in a, uh, protected marine environment, uh, where they could grow to adult stage and would be released at the end of the season or after the season were over to spawn in their natural habitat. The director, uh, of CCA Florida, Brian Gorski, and I had a conversation about this. He absolutely loves the idea. He said, I tell you what I'm going to do right now, and this was ten minutes into the conversation. He said, I will have CCA put fifty thousand dollars in matching funds uh, on the table for this Citrus County scallop project. Uh, so once it starts to come together and this group, uh, goes to TDC or to other private, um, donors, funding sources, and can match that, that fifty thousand dollars, then CCA, the Coastal Conservation Association, is already committed to putting a matching fifty thousand to it. Uh, this thing is really getting some legs. I'm excited about it, and I'll just keep you up to date on what, what's happening with it.
That's great.
That's it?
I know, um, the TDC board has been, uh, talking about it quite a bit, and, and we're on board with it. We need to, um, we had discussed, uh, shifting some of the bag limits or the week that, when we started, or, you know, pushing back the start one week, and we still need to address that, so I'll bring that up tomorrow as well.
I, uh, I know there's, there's talk out there about that. My, and, you know, certainly that's a conversation worth having. My concern is that, uh, FWC is expanding the seasons in the areas around us. Um, so the more that they, you know, Pasco County, I think, I believe now has, has a full season. They started with the ten-day season not too many years ago. I think they're out to just about a full season now. Obviously Hernando County, Levy County. And, you know, so if, I, I think that, that season discussion, uh, merits, um, some time, but I would prefer that the FWC do it on a statewide level. If we, if we do it on our own, all we've done is hurt ourselves. Uh, and the same thing with bag limits. I mean, there's stuff there that makes sense. Um, but we're only hurting ourselves if, if we ask for that to happen locally. And I, I have no doubt if we ask, if we ask for it locally, that eventually they would, they would approve it. But why not if we've, if we've got other avenues? And it's, it's, um, it's more than just reseeding, you know, more than just putting uh, millions of larvae out there. It's reintroducing scallops that were caught locally out there at the end of the season. And then it's teaching some conservation as well, that you don't need to keep these tiny little scallops, put them back in the water, or relocate to an area where there are no scallopers. Some of the guides were already doing that. And, you know, dump the small ones back in here, because people aren't looking over in there, and that gives them a chance to grow. But the big portion of them would be in a completely protected environment, uh, and then released back out here.
Yes, the, um, being in concert with the rest of the state is certainly something that we, every time we discuss this, we're always talking about that because of the competitive, um, disadvantage or advantage issues. So. All right, well, thank you.
You bet.
Um, let's see. Uh, Commissioner Finnegan? Commissioner Bays?
Couple of things, just going back to our outstanding commissioners list, um. There's something on there that we haven't discussed again, which was the examine the process of moving to a new water management district, if that's we never discussed it. I don't know what we're doing. Either do something about it or take it off. Um, the road resurfacing, we put the nearly thirteen million dollars in it last year. Where are we at? What roads are we paving, funding? Where are we going with it? Continue to update us on Bets Farm. I'd like to have something at least every meeting so that we know where we're at with it, so that we don't get six months, eight months, twelve months down the road, and we still don't have a contract. Um, where's Chaz's Whiska boat ramp? What's, where's, what's the status on that? Um, I think Commissioner Kennard brought up having IB four on there. And, um, I would also like to have a legislative wrap-up. Kinda know like what bills were passed that potentially have effects, things that maybe are not on our radar, but know what those are. And then, uh, this homeless bill, what, that just passed in. Where would we find space for that? How would we fund it? That's gonna be an issue, so those were all things that I had on my list, um, that I would like to have direction on.
Take care of it.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. And I have nothing. Um, Attorney Lynn?
I have nothing, thank you.
And we're doing second open to the public. If anybody would like to speak, come on up.
I think it's on. Janet Baric, Citrus Springs resident. It seems that Commissioner Bays and I have been on the same page most of the day. I had printed this out, cuz I'm tired of, it just goes to outstanding commissioners list. Okay, the first thing on the list is six years old. Second thing on the list is six years old. And it keeps saying, well, the first one says it's gonna take three years to complete. That's three years ago. Okay, that has to do with the landfill. The second one says it's ongoing. Has to do with the landfill. Okay, Falls River Road, she's right. Okay, and we keep going. I had another one that I circled from twenty twenty-two. Examine the process for mo- moving the water management. I mean, for some reason or other, the list doesn't change. Now, we used to get it printed on the agenda so everybody could see it. Now you have to go to the backups. Fine, I went to the backups. I printed it out. It frustrates me when I see the same list, month after month. And it's not, you know, and, and now you say you wanna add a couple more things to it during the meeting. You said you were gonna add a couple more things to it. What are, are we doing? Just making a list for fun? You know, these are things that you were gonna address, you were gonna take care of. They're supposed to be being taken care of. And, you know, how, how mu- how long do we have to wait? Six years, I think, for one item and, for item number one and number two is more than enough time. That's two sets of commissioners. Okay? And when you talk about the, the other thing a few minutes ago about a hundred and fifty thousand from TDC, well, that's kinda nice. But earlier in the budget, we said, you, you said that you didn't wanna spend money, you know, give people three percent if they only need zero percent. Now, all of a sudden, a hundred and fifty thousand, and then they can spend whatever they want, and then they show you what they spent it on. We'll go from one direction to the other direction, and the pendulum goes back and forth. Depends on whose money it is. I know TDC money is not the general budget. And a lot of people may not understand that. The TDC money doesn't come out of our general budget. But to be turning around and saying, well, give them a hundred and fifty and let them spend it the way they want, and then give them the a hundred and fifty and let them spend it the way they want, yeah. There are good programs in Inverness. There are good programs in Crystal River. But up to now, they had to show what they were gonna spend it on and how much it was gonna cost. You know, they questioned something out, and they said, okay, this is what we'd like, please. And then they give it to you. So I don't know. You go from one side to the other. Thank you for listening to me. Have a nice weekend.
Hi, it's Joy again, Joy Wilson. Uh, thank y'all for being here and doing what you do. I wouldn't want y'all's jobs for nothing, so thank you. Um, I just wanna speak a little bit more about the homeless. I would like to ask for some creative solutions to come up with, for help with the homeless. Um, I know that they want, I think they want to be close to, you know, where they can where they can get their showers and eat. And I know that tents come up on private property right there in Hernando, and then they're chased away. So I know that Hernando, the old historic schoolhouse is there, and there's lots of property behind there. And there's the fence, a fence next to the Hernando Baptist Church, and it's lots of trees there. I think that might be a temporary place for them on a trial basis. They don't need a lot of room, you know, they just have tents. So maybe there could be just like a little easement taken at the back of the old schoolhouse next to the Hernando Baptist Church, and then they can just walk over to Connections, get some food and get their showers. And also, I believe there is a dumpster there at Connections, and there could be just some nice signs that says the litter needs to go over there or their garbage needs to go, be carried over there to Connections where the dumpster is. So I think there could be some solutions. There's also some property that might be able to be purchased. Next to the, down from the Hernando Nazarene Church, there's all that woods there. And then the path grows a garden across the street back in, back in there behind Hernando Nazarene Church. So there is some property there that could be looked into. So I appreciate any creative solutions that y'all could come up with. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Stephen Schwartz, Beverly Hills. Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Baze, for bringing forth having a solid direction and not just shooting arrows. What the county needs the most at this time is attainable housing and infrastructure. Attainable housing is housing based on your income. If you don't have housing for the workers, where are they going to get workers for all of the commercial box stores and restaurants that are in existence and/or currently being built? The county has a shortage of sheriffs, fire rescue, ambulance, doctors, nurses, and will have a shortage of water and water pressure. If you continue at the pace you are building and these shortages are not filled, you possibly can be charged with negligence, possibly individually. Rather than raising property taxes, this is a time that you could be putting on the ballot a 1% sales tax to be used exclusively for roads resurfacing or new roads. The four biggest issues I have seen on social media are the dismal roads, lack of sheriffs, why are we building so fast, especially with a lack of infrastructure, and where are the workers going to live that is attainable? With all of the big box stores being approved, has the county and the chamber forgot about the small business owners that have been the backbone of Citrus for decades? Now that you have awakened the sleeping bear, which is the largest voting block in the county, other neighborhoods are watching how you vote on issues that affect them. Drivers have become more aggressive. The stores and roads are more congested, and attitudes have become more violent. It is time to put a moratorium on new construction until what has been approved is built so the county can assess what is needed most and fix the dismal infrastructure. The residents are looking for leaders that have the best interest with emphasis on the charm and beauty and roaming hills that they moved here for. At the pace you are going, the Nature Coast will be gone within five years. Again, you can't stop growth, but you can manage it sensibly using common sense. Just because you can approve something doesn't mean that you have to. You can say no, and you can tell a developer, this is our master plan, and this is what we need. I hope that when you meet your constituents, you will pay attention to what they are saying and what is needed most. Correct me if I'm wrong, the governor's law, as it is written, says you can't be sued for rezoning, but the residents, but where does it say?
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Have a good evening. Board, anybody want to respond? No? Seeing none? Okay.
Joy, the, I meant to say something the first time you spoke, and what a servant's heart you have, and keep it up. That is a tough mission that you're on with the homeless people. But the Education Foundation does help young homeless students. I don't know if you've contacted anybody at the Education Foundation, but they're a great resource. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Commissioner Schleball. Ms. Danton, you're up, I believe.
Upcoming meetings. Regular meeting, March 26th, 2024, at 1:00 PM, Citrus County Courthouse, Room 100, 110 North Apopka Avenue, Inverness, Florida. Regular meeting, April 9th, 2024, at 1:00 PM, Citrus County Courthouse, Room 100, 110 North Apopka Avenue, Inverness, Florida. Regular meeting, April 23rd, 2024, at 1:00 PM, Citrus County Courthouse, Room 100, 110 North Apopka Avenue, Inverness, Florida.
Thank you. Well done. And if no one has anything else, we are adjourned.